Welcome back. We are now on map F. And Luke, would you like to give us another brief summary of map F?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I'll have that right up.
Great. Looks like it's the heart of the city central special area.
Yes, there we go. So, heart of the city central special area does not have any tier one properties. So there are no recommended units currently coming out of this portion of the heart of the city. There are three tier two sites listed as 16A, B, and C, two of which have owner interest on them along this corridor. I'm not familiar with the existing uses in there. I believe these are all commercial buildings though on the corridor in the central area east of De Anza Boulevard. The densities along Stevens Creek were assumed to be 50 units per acre. But again, since these were not recommended by the commissions, there's no real set density for any of these sites. So with that, if the council would like to consider these, we could go ahead and do that. And you essentially have your own parameters to work around.
Okay, thanks Luke. I'm pretty sure 16A is a gas station, 16B is a restaurant, 16C... I'm not really sure what that is off to the right. But anyone like to start us off on council for these? Councilmember Willie and Moore have their hands raised. Councilmember Willie, why don't you start us off? Would you like to start us? Oh, Leftover. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I would like to have a closer look at those properties to know what is on them exactly currently. And then also the, I believe, yeah, we're showing 50 dwelling units per acre is the new minimum, yeah, minimum density. I'd like to hear if there's a staff recommendation or is that the staff recommendation? And then what's the total that we would get to? Were those developed?
Yeah, okay. I mean, can anyone confirm what's on A, B, and C? I think A is the Shell, 16B Sweet Mabel, I want to say, 16C, I'm not sure. Yeah, it used to, the restaurant that used to be Coconut Cafe, I think. Great, thanks for bringing up the map. Okay. Yeah, great, great, great.
Thank you. And where was the third?
A little bit up until the left. Sun Design Center, that building.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, and your other questions, Councilmember Moore? Did anyone want to speak to those?
Yes, regarding what the final density would, what was recommended density? And then how many units would we get for those three? They look, it looks like you've got a .46, a .47, and a .64 acre lot.
Yeah, where are you pulling that information from? Councilmember Moore, I'm sorry, where were you pulling the acreage? Just for the benefit of the public, where were you?
Okay, I'm using the recommended sites inventory. And then I also have the slide deck which you're seeing, so I'm kind of bouncing between the two of them.
Okay, recommended sites inventory. And I'm sure you don't have the super enumerated. It looks like you have it in paper copy there.
Yeah. I could help. I think it was the staff's recommendation to go with the 50. Again, these are tier two sites, so they're only in here in the event that there is a tier one site that doesn't make it. These would just be studied in the environmental review. No changes would be made to the minimum densities unless council actually takes action on it. With regard to the yield on these, 16A would be 23 units, 16B would be 24 units, and 16C would be 32 units.
Okay. Director Fu, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Really quick, while I just referred to Attachment E, put the acreage.
Okay, great, thank you for the reference. Okay, we'll pull that. And just for, does anyone know what the page number is on that within the big packet? Councilmember Moore?
If Attachment E is the recommended sites inventory, I'm on page four of it.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so let's go to...Andy, Andy, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. If I may, just briefly, the location that I just showed on the screen, that's part of the memo. So we did include the number of anticipated tier two units within the memo, which is Attachment A.
Great. Okay, folks, and I'll note that Attachment E appears to start, I want to say page 170, is that right? Well, in any event, let's go to...Anyone else who has some comments here with map F? All right, so going once, going twice?
Oh, yeah, somehow the hand doesn't raise. Oh.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So, these have property owner interest. Do they indicate how, what density they would like to see? Or what do they plan to...And these are heart of the city, so they have the frontage retail requirement too, right? So what's their interest? Do they intend to retain the retail? Or do they intend to build old housing?
I don't have the specific responses on these sites, though most of the owner interest forms were pretty generic that were really just expressing interest. Some were specific, but very few where they were able to make a more detailed request. I know the two sites just indicated that they wanted to be included on the housing sites inventory list. I don't know if any particular density was recommended. The 50 was recommended by staff along the Stevens Creek corridor. But again, since these sites were tier two, there was very little discussion at the planning commission of the tier two sites. The focus was very much on tier one. So, yeah, that, I don't know if there's really any specifics beyond the owners were interested and the density seemed appropriate for the Stevens Creek corridor.
Okay. What's the acreage on them? I, you mentioned, I didn't write. So what's the acreage?
I believe the total's about an acre and a half.
But they are individual sites, so what's the acreage for A, B, and C?
I can help with that. It's .46, .47, and I believe .64 for 16A, B, and C. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. We have Councilmember Wei next.
So I have a quick question. I am very familiar with the Sun Design location. And as it says, this is the heart of the city, so there is a retail component that we ask, right? Can I confirm that first?
Sure, go ahead. Anyone want to answer that with regard to retail at Sun Design, Pew?
At this point, we do not have a strict requirement. All we say is that the frontage along Stevens Creek should have some sort of commercial that allows for interactions with the public in and out. And about 50% of the rear of the building have the same stuff. Things that are that include optometrists, travel agencies, such a bad example, but things that involve, you know, interaction with customers, I'll put it that way.
All right, understood. And these locations actually are very close to schools. I know at Sun Design, right behind it, they have middle school and elementary school. So will we consider closing to, close to schools as moderate income housing? Because we do need moderate income housing for our housing elements. Again, how can we encourage that?
These sites are fairly small. They're all in the half acre range. You know, in order to make these be viable for affordable housing, they do need to have a certain amount of density on them, particularly if we do expect any kind of parking to be included with that as well. So that's the reason why these were kind of thrown out there, to make it, to see whether these would stick and to see if they might be of interest to affordable housing developers.
Okay, so one general question is, I know tier two is going to be studied in the EIR too. So because we don't have a density on it, do we, the EIR going to treat it as a 50 units per acre density study or?
Correct. Whatever shown on the table is what we're thinking. Or a very tight range around that number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. That was about two minutes. So everyone's pretty much at two minutes. Councilmember Willie, did you have any comments? Okay, any other follow-ons at this time? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still up?
Oh, no.
Okay, let's go on to map G then. And Luke, if you could give us a brief summary of map G. And it looks like map G is the heart of the city crossroads special area.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. Similar to the last slide, again, there are nothing but the tier two properties shown on Heart of City Crossroads. As I'd mentioned earlier in the evening, the large rectangular area at the bottom of the slide on the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard between Stelling and De Anza, that is the Heart of City Crossroads. That is, I believe, well over, one site's over 10 acres, so the entirety of that is, you know, fairly large. The reason we included this in the discussion at this time is because the Fontana's Restaurant site and the Pizza Hut site, I believe this is Sites 15C and D, it was really those two buildings that are vacant that were part of many discussions, not necessarily the whole Heart of City Crossroads. But we did want to include these properties, which I believe are all under single ownership on this slide in case the council had any interest in the discussion. Sites 15A and B are also tier two. They had owner interest. But again, I just want to reiterate, the larger site, the crossroads itself, we do not have any owner interest receipt. And I know we reached out at least twice to that property owner. Similarly, I believe these sites were shown as a mix of 50 and 30 dwelling units per acre, with 15A and B being 50 and the crossroad site itself being 30. And I could turn it over for questions with that. But again, I just want to avoid any confusion. These sites are not currently recommended and reflected in the tier one housing total.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Any discussions? We have Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow?
Oh, you mean Site 15A, B, and all the rest are under one ownership? Or A and B have separate ownership and the contiguous block is one ownership?
Yes, that is correct, Vice Mayor. 15A and B have different owners and the large multi-lot contiguous site is under one ownership.
And that owner is not interested?
We have, yeah, we have not received anything from them to say they are or are not. So we've only considered owner interest where people have contacted us to tell us they are specifically interested.
So 15F is Pizza Hut, right?
Actually, I believe Pizza Hut is part of the 15D site that sits between 15G and 15F.
Oh, okay, that's why I was wondering. You said 15D is Pizza Hut. I was, I got confused. Okay.
Yes, it's on the portion that fronts Stevens Creek Boulevard, but is part of that 10-plus acre property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Chow. That's about a minute 10. You have a minute 50 remaining. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering what the density is on Marina P5? Because I'm pretty interested in the 15A. I'm just not sure about the 30 versus the 50 dwelling units per acre. So I was wondering what P5 is going to be.
If I may, I can help with that. P5 is 35 dwellings to the acre currently. And if, yeah, that's 35.
Okay, so I'm also interested in 15, well, I'm interested in 15A, 15B, and 15C, 15G. I, not 15D, I expressed some concerns about that, that particular one. But I was wondering, where can I find, well, and I also want to change the density and keep it at 30 for those. And I was wondering what the total would be if you went with A, B, C, and G at 30? You could have a total of that. So to kind of follow along with what I'm thinking is with the distribution along the crossroads. And I, and I'm not sure when we plan on, if we're trying to wrap something up with these tonight or we're just going to look at them. But I would like to hear what Councilmember Willie thinks about this. Or does he have a different vision when it comes to equitable distribution? Is he looking further, further west even to pull the heart of the city east density? So I'd like to work with the request, but I'm not ultimately sure what are where Councilmember Willie is wanting to relocate these units to. So I would like to have the totals. And then I guess at some point, we're going to be doing some swapping, tier one, tier two swapping in order to honor the request.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I have you at 2:15 with about 45 seconds remaining of this. Let me see if we have, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised?
So I'm happy to get the question. Of course, I always like to move down the list of, you know, what I would consider the best type of exchange, little less, a little less. For the best type of exchange, when we're getting 2 million square feet of office of ALCO, I'd like to see office for office changed, you know, losing office for housing. Before we start saying we're going to be impacting our retail, I share what one of the residents said, that when you do start putting the housing in the retail, the retail starts dwindling and stuff. So I would rather start with a good understanding of Bub Road. If it really comes out that Bub Road is just not doable, then I would consider crossroads. I'd rather not consider crossroads until we really have explored the Bub Road. Unfortunately, because that Bub Road is not, there's only one small little site, I'm asking staff to truly fill in that area that has not been highlighted on the maps. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. So you're at about 1:20 with 1:40 remaining. And so let me go on and check the...Andy, your hand is raised. Did you want to speak to any of these comments?
Yes, I have an answer for Councilmember Moore.
Yes, please go ahead.
My calculations show 80 units for A, B, C, and G at 30 dwelling units per acre. That would equal 80 units.
Okay, great. Quick question, and Councilmember Willie, did you have anything on this map G? Okay, go ahead.
So I'm actually in agreement with Councilmember Moore. I do like the A, B, C, and G sites because that's, A really complements the P5 that we have it right there. If you have a little bit more housing, then you can have transit go over there. And the B and C and G are sites that right on front Stevens Creek. And it is located pretty close to possible transit. So I do like Councilmember Moore's comments.
Okay, thanks. That's about 30. P7, 10040 Bianchi Way, what is that currently?
I can help with that.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I believe that is a fourplex and they actually wish to develop four... There was a proposal to develop six units on it total. So it would be a net increase of two potentially on there.
Do you remember when we considered that, Pew?
No, no, it's still under, it's in the pipeline. So they're applying and they're going through the motions right now, so it hasn't been presented.
I see, so the application's been submitted. We just haven't seen it yet. That's correct.
Correct, it's still in process.
Got it.
I did want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may, with regard to Sites 15C and G. 15C is the former Fontana's Restaurant. It has a parking lot associated with it. 15G is the parking lot in front of the Staples Building, which is the primary parking lot that is used for the Staples Building at the rear. If that does get developed for housing, then that Staples Building does become pretty unviable. So I just did want to point that out for the council's consideration.
Okay, thanks very much. So anything else? We have Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still raised. Did you have a follow-on there for Heart of City Crossroads special area?
So first, I want to clarify the target density and target height. Remind me, so Marina is 30 units per acre, right? And what was the height? That was 45 feet.
Anyone feel free to...
But I mean, so how, it seems the target height here is low. It's not normal.
Let me, hold on, let me stop you there, just so we get the information there. So Pew, the density of the Marina project is what? Is it 30?
Sorry, I was just trying to confirm that it is. It is 35 dwelling units to the acre for Marina. And I believe they are looking for a density bonus waiver to go up, at least for one of the buildings, up to 60 feet, I believe.
Okay.
They are making the units bigger.
I mean, when they were, when they did not ask for density bonus, 30 units per acre would still be 45 feet.
They were still 35 dwellings to the acre back then.
Oh, 35 units. And then, so this assumption, target height actually is probably realistic when there is zero other use, if it's old housing, then you might fit under this height. But if, once you add ground floor retail, that's not going to be this height, right?
Well, I mean, we did have a metropolitan development, which is the condos right next to the Main Street development. And that was able to develop at 35 dwelling units to the acre at 45 feet with no density bonus waivers. Of course, it was back in 2004, '05.
Yeah, I mean, 35 units at 45 feet, not 40 units at 45 feet. So what I mean is, this, 30 units is not going to be 35. It's likely five feet more.
That was what Luke was pointing out, that we would not make changes at the 30 dwelling units to the acre. It would still remain at 45 feet.
And also, this is assuming it's old housing?
I will defer to David on that one.
That's okay. Just, I think we need some clarity on this estimation. I don't think it's quite accurate. It's misleading to the public.
Okay, that's time. Did anyone have a follow-up?
Put the assumptions down.
Yeah, okay, great. So let's go to Councilmember, I'm just going by order, Councilmember Wei. So in terms of the, so we went from Vice Mayor Chow to Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Wei. Okay, Councilmember Moore, you have about 45 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pew, for mentioning 15G being the parking lot. While 15D probably has enough spare parking to essentially help the Staples lot out. It's to the east, so I'd actually be interested in 15E and having a ground floor retail component on those three, the CG and E lots. I don't know if that would be awkward, but there is a lot of parking also in the 15D area. I believe we're looking at, if I'm in the right area, yeah, we're across from Target Dish and Dash in 15F, I think. You've got Party City. There's just a whole lot of parking to the west of Party City. So I wish there could be some sort of agreement if necessary. So anyway, I just want to bring that up, that if you include 15E, I'm coming up with 24.3 dwelling units at the 30 dwelling units per acre. So we were at 80, so we're at 104.3. Or 15A, B, C, G, and E. I think I have that correct. I just wanted to toss that out there as we move along. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And then now we have Councilmember Wei. So Councilmember Wei, oh, you don't have your hand raised? Oh, you just didn't lower your hand, okay. Let's see, Councilmember Willie, did you have anything and follow-up? No, nothing? Okay. All right, so I know we're going to get this information later when we get updated on the map. How big is 15D?
15D is about 10.45 acres.
Okay.
Yeah, it's almost two and a half.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Pew had answered that. It's a little under 10 and a half acres.
Right, okay, okay, great. And what was the owner's, just a non-response to an outreach?
We've contacted the owner at least twice, if not maybe even three times, and we have not heard back from them on any interest on developing this property.
Okay, and then with regard to, okay, well, with regard to addressing the possibility of the problem that you raised, Pew, with 15G as a parking lot to Staples and then putting 15E as perhaps mixed use, that's all something that can be done within the subsequent discussion, right? But if we were going to do that, we would probably want to identify that now, right? For the purposes of the viability of the possibility, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we would look at with the zoning again, just to make sure that we bring you a project that the community likes. But in general, yes. In fact, a portion of 15C, I was also looking at the area, also serves as parking lot for 15E.
Right, okay. All right, I don't see any further hands raised. Well, Vice Mayor Chow, is your hand raised from before or did you want to?
Yeah, I want to add something. I think we're wasting a lot of time asking what's this site for, what's the acreage of this site. It would be great if we have this list, for example, this is, I obtained actually from Peggy's email and added some information. If we have this information together with each site, that would save us a lot of time, plus the acreage. Thank you.
Right, I agree. I think acreage and the number of anticipated new units based upon the recommendation.
I mean, current use. We need to know what's the current site. If it's offices, commercial, this is really useful. Thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks very much. Yeah, all good information to have in a snapshot there. So let's go on. And to members of the public, we're at about nine o'clock right now. We've gone through maps A through G. If you have any further comments on our going over maps A through H, let's go ahead and open it up to another round of comments on those. And then if, just, we'll take a look at where we are time-wise. If we can get into the next half of the maps, then I think we would probably take them a couple at a time. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to map H, Luke. And so map H, looks like it's the Homestead Road special area.
You're muted, Luke.
Thanks, Andy. Oh, actually, you're still muted, Luke. Maybe a technical glitch? Maybe I can, it could be technological. Hit your "Ask to unmute" button if that works. Oh, there you go.
Is that...Okay. Okay, we're onto site H. Sorry about that. I'm not sure what the technical issue was. Um, so we are on now the Homestead Road Special Area, which was the last of the sites covered at the beginning tonight. Um, we have a number of sites, uh nineteen A and B over to the east and central area are standalone lots with uh clusters of development along the Stelling corridor up to Homestead, sites twenty A, B, and C. So I believe we had, there's nineteen A and B are shown there, both of which had owner interest. And then the sites over to the west, we did not have owner interest for those. Um, the sites on the west side of Stelling are largely made up of, I believe it is the Valley Church, and these are sites devoted to outdoor recreational uses like uh uh sandlot courts and maybe some tennis courts. Over here, we have the uh commercial center that includes the bowling alley. Um, so these are, again, these are one of our three areas where we have a considerable amount of unit potential going in. Um, the density is uh for the uh nineteen A is a fifteen per acre site. That is currently, I believe, a single-family home that's next to the PG&E facility. The remainder of the properties, nineteen B and twenty A, B, and C are all at fifty units per acre. So that concludes uh staff comments on this property.
Okay, any comments? I see Vice Mayor Chow followed by Kitty Moore or Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Not you.
Oh, that's from earlier?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore?
I'll call it in.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Luke. I was wondering if you could talk about the the, I believe you mentioned the church and the sandlots and point that out again. I believe that's twenty C, and they're and they're not interested. Um, is that the area mentioned? Is that having some outdoor recreation?
Yes, it did. And you know, I'm sorry if I misspoke because I that is not, um, I don't see the red dot designating that, but as I say that, I believe we did have owner interest. Um, go ahead and do those. So I'm sorry I misspoke because it's not reflected on the map.
Twenty C?
Correct.
Oh, interesting. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, but it's no, it is. I I it just looks like it's colored a little bit differently on the on the list. Um, oh, lot, possible lot mergers for a single project site. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. It's about a minute. So Councilmember Way.
Yes, my question is on twenty B, the bowling uh bowling alley site. Is it owned by one owner? Because I thought I understood the bowling site was is owned by an owner, and the other shopping sites is owned by somebody else. Or do they have one owner on twenty B, except the McDonald's?
If I may, um, no, those are owned by different property owners.
So they're different owners, but we're putting it together as a um hoping that they're developed together, or they can develop separately?
Um, we're hoping that they could be developed together as one contiguous um site, project.
Okay, and the other one is across from from the church, and I do know that the church has interest. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Way, and next, um, Councilmember Willie, did you want to speak on this? Okay, um, let me see. So on site nineteen A, is that the, is that the house that we had considered previously in the spring? Is that?
Correct.
Okay, so why would that not be a pipeline project? Is that something that?
They, so the project that um that the council had considered was just for the general plan amendment authorization about whether staff can even evaluate whether that would be possible. Uh, but they never submitted for any project past that.
So no submittal. Basically, you're considering it a pipeline project if someone has submitted a plan.
Correct, or their approvals, yeah.
Okay, um, how does that compare to the general plan amendment request? Is that, does that track with it, or is it different?
So the general plan request was for four units. I believe we're looking to uh upzone that a little bit to add up to six units on the site.
Okay, so the request is for an additional four, but we're asking here to have two more on top of that, so.
The request was to have an additional three because there's an existing house on it, and then we're saying two more.
Okay, got it. So total, okay, as as reflected in that table, so total would be six.
Correct.
And, okay, so this is a little bit different. Uh, presumably, they would go and move over to this housing element exercise. Or has there been a, okay. And so I know that owner interest is expressed here, and so I take it that they're probably gonna wait until after the results of this uh before submitting a plan. Is that the understanding here?
It is expensive to do environmental review and other things that is involved with the general plan amendment.
Okay, and then nineteen B, that's um, I guess that's the auto repair shop that 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 uh was burnt out a while back?
That's right.
Okay, so any additional environmental considerations there based on that?
Not necessarily. It'll just be uh site cleanup as necessary um and as required by our mini code.
Okay, so you're looking at thirty-five dwelling units an acre being up to fifty. So uh how how big is this site? I I take it it's less than half an acre based upon the the total number of units?
Correct. I believe this is about point four two acres.
Point four two, okay. And is there any um, i- i- I know that it's surrounded by kind of a um a a complex that's also in Cupertino as as reflected in this map, but is there any kind of um kind of consideration with regard to what the surrounding density is?
Uh, I believe the surrounding density is about thirty-five dwelling units to the acre as well.
Okay.
Um, but this is on a is on a corner, and uh again, we're trying to find sites that are, might turn out to be viable for affordable and attractive to affordable housing developers.
Okay, so thirty-five dwelling units per acre could be, so that's, the surrounding area is thirty-five dwelling units without any that that's just the density as exists, right? It's not-
Correct. There was no density bonus law when that was developed, I don't believe.
Right, okay, okay. Um, I see. And I think um, is the Oddfellows Lodge in our city, or is that in Sunnyvale?
That is in Cupertino, and it's about a a quarter of a mile down, about half way down that block.
Yeah, I I think it's kind of dotted, right, on on the map, on the on the left-hand side? Oh, actually, I'm looking at my own.
It's in the mid, it's mid-block between the yellow and the 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 pink dots.
Hold on, let me see if I, let me go back to the zoom here. Um, yes, uh, yes, within the yellow and pink, okay, so so basically that that rectangle uh above Homestead, um, that's it's kind of the far left of the rectangle, right?
Correct.
Okay, did anyone reach out to them?
I believe they were part of the consideration. If they hit the half acre to the ten acre mark, we did reach out to them, and this parcel is about point eight acres, so we we did send out letters to them.
Okay, so there's just no, all right, well. All right, um, and then remind us again, between twenty A, twenty B, and twenty C, which ones are the ones that have interest? Is that just twenty B? Or was that twenty C?
Twenty C, and I believe twenty A is part of that whole, it's owned by the same property owner.
Okay, so the western side of Stelling, but not the eastern side of Stelling, has indicated interest. Okay, all right. And and you know, I'm wondering about that twenty B site. They had um, we were considering it in the last housing element potentially as some of the alternative sites. I mean, if they had expressed, I mean, presumably because of the nature of the way we went about it, I mean, they had uh expressed some interest at some point in the past. I mean, is there any sense of why there's not that willingness to stay part of this particular conversation? Um, you know?
We just haven't heard from them.
Just haven't heard from, okay, okay. So I guess I guess the McDonald's is on the very corner is a very, is is a different owner. Is that correct? Based upon that cutout there? Okay, and I know the the opposite corner has just been redeveloped, right? I mean, it's just more more office, I guess.
It was a Bank of America building.
Right, they turned it into a BOA, okay. Um, all right, um, so final question with regard to these various follow-ups. Irrespective of whether it's, you know, you've heard from the owner in the past, or, you know, it just looks like a potentially viable site, do we have a plan for following up again? You know, in terms of, or I I mean, you know, maybe maybe part of this is the communication, you know, process. I mean, they hear from us once, and then maybe seven years later, they hear from us again. I mean, is there, you know, that kind of um that that kind of a strategy to, you know, have that ongoing communication with the owners?
So we anticipate that when when the council does finally make decisions, when we bring the housing, draft housing element back, that we do some outreach with these property owners to let them know that these um items are being considered, because there will be rezoning associated with it and general plan amendments associated with any of the council's actions. We would notice and um communicate that with the property owners.
I mean, it might not be a bad idea to, you know, kind of start a list, you know, just an outreach list for for these types of sites since we're going through this whole thing. All right, um, let's see. It looks like Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Way have hands raised again. So Councilmember Moore.
Sure, I I'm just asking for a favor from staff if I could have, and probably all of council, if we could have the Excel spreadsheet version of the recommended uh sites inventory. Because I I tried to do a conversion. It didn't come out very well to convert the the PDF, so if someone could please send us uh Excel version and I, because I wanted to manipulate the numbers a little bit um on my own. Okay, um, is that doable?
Excel version?
Yeah.
Spreadsheet? I don't see anyone. I'm not gonna pick anyone. Pew? Uh, I I you you have some follow-ups, but you know, is that workable in the next? Are you are you asking for that in the future, Councilmember Moore, or for tomorrow night?
Uh, I'd like to have it in, well, yeah, some sometimes sometime early in the morning. I'm gonna assume it started off as an Excel version, and then it got converted into PDF and for the presentation, so I'm hoping to have the 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 Excel version so that I can um well, one one thing I want to do is reorder it so that it's matching this, because we're going alphabetically, and so I've I'm now bouncing between pages back and forth, so I want to I want to for myself put it in, put it in alphabetical order by um the way the presentation's going. And then I want to try changing some of this, the minimum densities uh on a couple of things, um, and seeing how that works out, and yeah. So I just want to manipulate it a little bit.
Okay, pending request. I see Director Fu with a hand raised. Um, Ben, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll say we'll we'll certainly work our darnest and and work with the uh the consultant. I I um I don't want to speak for Andy, but I think, you know, and and you should be able to do that. Um, but we're our focus right now, of course, is is to get all these comments together and then come back to you to tomorrow. But yes, we'll definitely work with consultant and staff and try to get that to you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. I'm not looking for you to do the work. I wanted to to just have the 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 Excel version of the one that's that's in the in the um packet. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Councilmember Moore. Let's go and Director Fu, let's go to Councilmember Way, and then Vice Mayor Chow.
Right, um, so I really want to follow up with twenty B. It is really ideal location because it has Homestead High School to the left and Sunnyvale where people work on the north, and then uh apartments across the street. And it really is a shopping center that needs to be worked on, and the um, so I I know we're gonna make outreach to the owners, and I think they belong to two owners probably. Um, the bowling belongs to one. I remember vaguely the bowling bowling owner actually reached out to the city for one time, and so maybe we can rework. I just think that's a really, this is a really good location to have some density housing with some retail under, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Way, and um Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, yeah, my concern is the record has been, once we turn a shopping center into mixed use, it kills the retail because they tend to have very tiny retail space. So this right now is a very lively shopping center. Yeah, it's outdated. It should be updated, like the Homestead Shopping Center at the corner of the Anza. I wish, it could be updated, but I'm not sure. Um, yeah, so the for, I'm getting a little confused here. And so twenty C has owner interest, and twenty A on the same side of Stelling, they have the same owner. Right?
Yes, that's what was stated.
Twenty A also has owner interest or not?
What it sounded like to me, what staff was saying, was that twenty C does have owner interest, and twenty A being the same owner would appear as if it would, but it didn't sound, yeah.
Do they have interest of developing them together or not, or do and what they intend to develop? Do I have some idea? Because it's a church.
Okay, yeah, so.
They intend part of the site to be developed?
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, let's go ahead and let um staff, yeah, so Luke, you have your mic on, and Pew, I think you made that miss, that that statement, so.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what the Pew had said earlier. Um, I don't know the nature, if there was one expressed of what type of housing, but twenty A and twenty C um both have owner interest and is the same ownership. Uh, twenty B is where we did not receive any owner interest.
Okay, um, well, thanks, Vice Mayor.
We know what type of interest do they intend to develop? Do they intend to re-keep the church, but develop part of the site? They have a very big parking lot, I understand, yeah.
I believe because the parcels that were shown are the fields, the the areas that don't have structures. Um, that would lead me to believe that the church, which is south of that, would be retained.
Oh, so church is is not part, it's a separate, on a separate parcel. That that would be have been good to know, because I didn't understand that. So A and C are both currently just parking lot.
And I believe like sand volleyball courts and recreational areas, they they don't, they're not developed with structures.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, uh, great, thanks very much. So um, let's uh, Councilmember, were you have your hand raised? Did you still, okay? Um, yeah, y- you know, I I think actually the 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 site located over at twenty B is uh is a fairly vibrant shopping center at this point. I mean, and um you know, we we do have a couple of bowling alleys. Is that bowling alley still open? Do people know? It is, right? It's Homestead Lanes, yeah. So I mean, it it's, you know, one that I think is, you know, pretty pretty readily accessible, but uh uh, yeah, and and one one thing I'll say, you know, the reason I asked my question about the Oddfellows Lodge is that um I believe it was open in the Great Depression for basically housing purposes, and so, you know, I think it would be, you know, interesting to see if there was a desire, you know, inconsistency with their their founding charter to, you know, um, you know, work on this uh issue together, so. Uh, in any event, I don't see any new hands raised at this time, and so as promised, I'm gonna go ahead and uh bring this over to the public again. So we've been through maps A through H. Uh, feel free to raise your hand if you have comments at this time. And so Jennifer, uh, thank you for your your patience. I I see that your hand has been raised for a while. And so we'll go by the same methodology uh with regard to other public comments. If you have your hand raised in Zoom by the time that the first speaker, Jennifer, uh is done, then we'll call on you for uh this round of public comments, and uh same goes for any uh blue cards live or any emails that go into city clerk, all one word at 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 um cubertino.org um in the time that the first speaker is done uh is is speaking. And so Jennifer, welcome. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. You know, I had received a phone call for some reason right at the point you guys were talking about the plan for tonight, so I sent you a couple of emails about when the public would get input, so just ignore that. I and I, it would be, it's really good also to keep the public updated as to when they can give input. Um, I tried to keep track of all the different sites. Uh, Planning Commission took input as we went along. Yeah, this stuff is killer, but you know, we have to go through it. HCD is intent on destroying my city. I shop at Westgate, and Santa Z is trying to destroy Westgate, so there'll be no place to shop. We can't buy gas. Well, there'll be no place to buy drugs. I I'm really, really, really depressed. Um, okay, map A, Valco Village. Um, okay, this is right across- Okay, this is right across from Apple. I do not, I, I spent a great deal of my life making sure that those ash trees on Homestead were preserved. And Apple has done a bang-up job. I don't want Valco Village or Cupertino Village or whatever it's called now to become a high-rise pile next to Apple. They have to have setbacks. That, I'm, I don't give a hang about HCD. This is my city. That is the Sunnyvale gateway on Wolf Road at Homestead. And if HCD doesn't understand that, we need a new governor. I want to make sure that if they want to build that pile next to Sunnyvale and Wolf, that they have adequate setbacks and we have street trees there. In fact, I demand it. You know, Apple is a great commodity for this city and I give them every credit for doing the tree part. I don't want HCD to destroy that corner. HCD is not going to be here in 20 years. B, okay, I don't, if they're putting in supportive housing in that teeny, teeny weeny lot, and I know who owns that lot, okay? You know, there's a lot of stuff going on in this city. But if they're putting supportive housing in there on that lot at the back of the Valco thing, it's no big secret. The public has to be told. I have reasons, and I said one of the city council members why. I am not going to divulge that, but we need to know why. What type of housing is going in there? The public has the right to know. Also, the east side is getting dumped on. It's, it's, it's Valco, it's, it's HCD. HCD does not give a hang about anybody living in this city. And I'll say that again. I feel devaluated, discriminated again just because I happen to have scrambled to try to buy my house when it didn't even appraise. Rancho was a dump. There were murders in there. And I am so tired of being accused of being stuck up because I happened to buy a house. I bought a house in one of the worst areas in this state 25 years ago. And if nobody can understand that, then that is their problem. I am not going to kowtow to any of these people again. This is the biggest amount of hogwash I have ever heard. Yeah, we need to have more public input. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our, um, our, our hands raised at this time are from Gori Chala, from Scott Connolly and Lisa Warren. And Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or email comments that have come in during this time?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so next we have Gori, uh, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Gori Chala. I'm a junior at Cupertino High School. Um, I just wanted to once again bring up the pipeline projects. I know that there was earlier discussion about how what happened in San Francisco was not unusual to the circumstances of the housing development. But I think that if we take steps now to avoid wasting our time with this housing plan by getting called out by the state and take time to reduce these pipeline projects and make actual cohesive plans that will better the people of our city, it will be better for us to have housing that is actually workable. Making a cohesive plan, I'm a little bit worried about that. I know it's due in January and it's almost September and we are still talking about where to build these houses. We haven't even covered who's going to be living in these houses, how they're going to be built. Again, are the houses going to even have a cohesive plan with these pipeline projects? All of that. I think it's better if we make housing sites and decide, decide on housing sites that are more likely to be approved than to waste time by getting called out by the state because of pipeline projects. And I know that low-income housing development policy, you can't like say that this is going to be low income, but you can put into place the policy that would encourage low-income housing development. And I think that is something that should be highly prioritized alongside with a cohesive housing plan when you're deciding what sites you're going to build and when you're looking at the housing plan as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Gori. Next we have Scott Connolly. Welcome, Scott.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Paul, in council. Appreciate the dialogue tonight and the leadership to keep us all on track. But this meeting, especially at the start, felt rushed. You know, we're at a very critical time in the process, as you all know. And I think the public should have more opportunities to comment, especially property owners in attendance as their sites are being discussed. Tonight, the public had a chance to comment for three minutes each. But as I understand it, in these first eight maps, there are probably over 25-plus sites that we just went through. I'm sure there are residents that have multiple thoughts on many properties throughout the city. And with only one chance, with three minutes to speak at the opening, there's really no way for the public to summarize their thoughts coherently in this amount of time. I know the Planning Commission followed a format for public comment that allowed each attendee three minutes to speak on each map page. This feels fair. Councilmember Wiley, you asked for more public engagement, but in this meeting, it, it doesn't feel like the public is having much chance to do that often. You know, with only 13 folks on this call right now, allowing the public to comment more often as you work through each map page wouldn't really take up a lot more additional time. It's just a suggestion to take into consideration as we go forward. One note on property 20C that was just discussed, just as an FYI, that bowling center, shopping center, it's got three different owners. I know one of the parcel owners is owned by a developer who would love nothing more than to build housing on the site. But the center's encumbered with restrictive CCNRs that prevent one owner from building on their own. So that property is all or nothing. Either get all three or you don't have anything. And it's doubtful without clear owner interest letters to show HCD that the state would accept these properties. Last question is, for all the sites we've gone through so far, I can't tell if any decisions have been made. I know there's been a lot of good discussion, but I'm just a little confused how this discussion tonight is going to culminate. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and nice work to everybody, especially Luke for that presentation at the start. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Scott. And Scott, I want to thank you for the, the work that you did with regard to a request that I had made in terms of the call-out boxes and the information that you had shown me when you requested a meeting, so. Yeah, that, that was very much appreciated. I know it took a fair amount of time to do. So next we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
I'm on vacation and I'm spotty, but here I go. I don't have time to comment and everything because we didn't go one map by map. I believe that that was what was expected based on the discussion at the last meeting, but it's not happening, so here I am. Hopefully not going to break up and you won't be able to hear me. I think it was Luke that mentioned in the discussion over the North Blaney. I think that's, that was area nine, that lack of interest from a property owner is not necessarily a deterrent for HCD and choosing sites. That's been something that has been inconsistent throughout this whole process, which I've been at every meeting. There, you know, you, you get the, why isn't this being considered? As in the Pizza Hut and the Fontana's and other places? Well, there's no owner interest. Well, is there no owner interest or is it, you just never heard anything? Never been clearly stated. In 9A, there's non-owner interest? Yet it feels okay to staff and the consultant to go ahead and have that be a site? Yet when you get down to other sites that have interest, no interest or no comment, it, it's just so convoluted how that answer, it's gotten a little bit better, but I think you need to be very, very careful how excuses for picking sites or not picking sites are decided. So if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. 15D, the 10-acre plus site, is a very vibrant, very, 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 probably the most vibrant center, retail center in Cupertino. So to say that the bowling alley site is a vibrant center and probably not good for housing, but it's a good place for housing, I just, there needs to be some consistency in how things are selected. And I think the biggest consistency should be writing it out. We've got the, on the east direction of our city, I'm not going to say the east side because that gets so awkward. We have sites being considered that are tier two, that were considered but then not considered by planning. I earlier suggested that we maybe start from the other side of town because by the time you get to the side, to the west, if you feel like your numbers are good, I fear that you won't consider sites that have been deemed having no sites in certain areas. And I think you need to find sites in those areas. And I fear that you won't consider tier two where they may be better than the tier ones that are selected and above, et cetera, et cetera. And then again, on bub, property interest, who, why care there?
Oh, thank you, Lisa. That's, that's time. Okay, uh, so those were the hands that were raised during the first person commenting. And so let's go ahead and, and follow on. We're at 9:35 right now. And I, I do have a, a couple of follow-ons from the public with regard to commentary. So we had eight sites that we've considered and we've looked at the, the maps. You know, certainly if there are particular maps that any particular council member wants to look a little bit more closely at, I'd be happy to bring that back up at this point and try to, try to invite more public comment if that's desired. But in, in, in an interest in, you know, trying to make sure that we get through at least half the maps this evening, I think that was a very important, you know, structure to have. In, in terms of the follow-on, I take it that the staff is recording in some fashion, you know, the discussion here. And so I'm getting a nod from our city manager. And, and so with regard to the actionability of how we take the discussion that we've had and translate it over, I guess the, the hope is that I'm not here in some 24 hours asking for people basically to make a, an omnibus motion as to all of the default staff recommendations. Is there a plan for being able to deliver us that set of details with regard to the course of the discussion tonight prior to making a motion on what we're talking about here and tomorrow?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So I was able to confirm with Director Fu that there has been extensive and detailed notes taken tonight based on the conversation that council has. We will be working with City Attorney Jensen to come up with the recommendation for your action tomorrow.
Okay.
And assuming that there's more conversation following the statement of what the following map that has not been reviewed.
Of course. Okay. Well, thank you very much, City Manager Wu. So let's, um, go to other comments from council at this time. I see a couple of hands raised, one from Vice Mayor Chow. Councilor Moore just took her hand down, so let's start with Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, I actually did not know our comments tonight will be considered. Um, notes were taken because I did not really say a lot of my opinions, although I'm making notes on what, if I make a motion, what I would like to do. For example, the, the site that I think when public just mentioned the 15D, that's also a vibrant shopping center that I would not want to see redeveloped in this cycle and even as tier two. So, so there, there are a lot of comments that I am making in my notes. So how do I, should I go through them? That I would like to see this moved from tier one to tier two, tier two to tier one, this one removed entirely. I didn't really say those because I thought we would be making a motion at the end. That's what, 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 I'm not sure what's the protocol today.
Right, so the protocol today is we're going through these maps and we're trying to get some information shared with regard to what our comments and feedback are, the questions that we have with regard to these. The, the comments from public were taken at the very beginning and after the eight maps were gone over by staff and by, by council. And so with regard to being able to have an actionable document that reflects some of the discussion that was made today, my understanding of what staff is doing is providing us something that will be useful for us in our deliberative process tomorrow. It's not something that we're committed to accepting as an initial motion. It's just something, a tool, something that's a tool that can help us with our, our discussion. Does that reflect your understanding as well, Madam City Manager?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so we will be working on the notes and the comments and the questions and suggestions as came up tonight and then consolidate and present that to, to council for consideration tomorrow. And also working with City Attorney.
Then if, if our comments are going to be consolidated into a staff recommendation, then I would like to have time to go through my notes so that it's put into record for the staff to consider.
Okay, my understanding of this is that there's not going to be a new staff recommendation. Madam City Manager, is there going to be a new staff recommendation?
No, there will not be a new staff recommendation. It will be the same as tonight.
Okay, so we'll have a, we'll have a supplemental.
But I still would like to go through my notes that I didn't really say during my, I was mainly asking clarifying questions.
Okay, duly noted, Vice Mayor Chow. Let me go on to Councilmember Willie now, who has a hand raised as well.
So I've got a couple of minutes for comments in.
I'm not keeping you on timer right now. I just want to get some feedback from council as to where we are procedurally.
Yeah, so I realize on our list, Bubba Road is map, is going to be M and it says map ID 13. It doesn't tell me the property number, but I'm not seeing map 13. Okay, push that aside. You know, I pulled up Bubba Road previously. During this meeting, Scott heard my discussion about Bubba Road and actually did his quick research and sent it to me. All those properties on Bubba Road, 10-800, 10-100, 10-130, boom, 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 boom. It adds up on both sides of Bubba Road, all those office buildings add up to 27.08 acres. The, you start at the Stevens Creek and you move in, 10-800, 10-100 is vacant as we speak. Contacting the owner and saying, you've got a vacant building. You could be part, and, and also, all those buildings, single-story buildings, what do you think is going to happen over time? The owners of those individual buildings, they're going to increase them. They're going to make them two-story or three-story, just like what Apple's doing. And that office space is then going to be even more office space. But if we get those things starting in the direction of housing, like that vacant building at 10-100, it's .87 acres. Get that owner, say, hey, we will give you 30 acres or 30 units per acre on your site. There's a, a strong likelihood that he's going to say, yes, yes. Has staff done that? The combination of those office buildings is 27.08 acres. If you said it has a current FAR of .45, single-story, .45 would give you 530,000 square feet of office on those properties. If they were kept office and those owners said, you know what, we're going to double those by putting second stories on it, you've got a million square feet. And if they were to say, we're going to make them three stories or four stories, like Apple does, you've got 2 million square feet of office on Bubba Road. And yet, back in the year 2022, we had the opportunity to start housing on that strip and then let the dominoes fall. So again, I would really like staff to make a concerted effort to, to tell us how they've contacted those building owners and what those responses were. What I heard tonight was quite a bit that no, no response, did not hear from the owners. In, in business, you don't stop there. I don't want to hear that there was no response from the owner. I want to hear, we talked to the owner and the owner said he's not in the business of, of going into housing or something, then I can appreciate it. But no response from owner, to me, is not an answer for the type of project that we have to do for our city. Santa's A, I mean, Jennifer does not like Santa's A, no question about it. They do what they want to do regardless of what the building owners want to do or the community. They're doing their, their little villages all up and down Winchester and Stevens Creek. They're rezoning and putting in their urban villages because they know long-term they're going to start the process and then it's going to play out. And we're sitting back and not even taking that proactive type of, of work process. We want housing. We don't want office space. Let's start moving some of these office areas, specifically on Bub Road, into the housing umbrella. And if you take twenty-seven point oh eight acres.
Okay, John.
Just give me thirty seconds.
Okay, thirty seconds.
Twenty-seven point oh acres at thirty units per acre is eight hundred units. At forty units per acre, a thousand and eighty-three units. At fifty units per acre, thirteen hundred housing units could be put in that area and not impact neighboring residential areas.
Okay, thanks, John. What, what, what I'm hearing from you here is that you'd like to consider map thirteen, even though it's not one of the sixteen maps.
The only one I can find in here that has Bub Road on it has Bub Road shaded out.
Yeah, well, there, there are, I think, eleven maps that don't have, you know, sites under consideration here, so.
So Bub Road, I think, if nothing else, we need a special study session on Bub Road and, and.
No, no, I think it's well within the purview. I mean, absolutely correct me if I'm not. I, I know I'm correct, but it's well within the purview of our, our activity here to consider a map that didn't quite make it to this set of sixteen.
Right. Your agenda is to identify sites for the housing element.
Yeah, great.
That's right. So it's all, it's all fair here.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra thirty seconds.
Yeah, no, that's okay. You made me want to put everyone on a timer at the very beginning, but o- o- okay, so let me, um, Vice Mayor Chow, you, you have your hand raised, but let me go to Councilmember Moore.
Very short.
Councilmember, no, I want to, I want to be.
Now please forward the email to us, to the, to the city clerk.
I'm sorry?
Forward the email he received to city clerk.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. So Luke, to Councilmember Willie, to, uh, the city clerk, because it's a request from Vice Mayor Chow. All right, so, um, Councilmember Moore or Councilmember Wei, uh, do you have any comments at this time? Councilmember Moore, I don't see your hand raised. Councilmember Wei, I had a head shake, so, okay, Councilmember Moore.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, I'm not sure how the Bub Road, um, properties could factor in, in here, so I'd like to, to understand that. Um, and I'd like to understand the, the process, um, for, for tomorrow and how, uh, for instance, so I'd had a little bit of a exchange with Councilmember Willie about how to work on the, the equity question with regards to heart of the city and the, the east. Um, the, the east crossroads, and I think it's center, um, area, central. Um, and so I have just, just looking at those three, um, areas, I would, I had worked on trying to rebalance if you weren't going to have the east area used and you're moving it to central and then, uh, some parts of crossroads staying away from the, the ten-acre, um, main portion. Um, so it, it looked like that was something that could work. But if we're looking at Bub, are, is, are we thinking we're going to have something tomorrow? Um, that we can be, be looking at? Um, because I think that would be very interesting to, to further, um, bring out some distribution. I think that, that's a, a really in- intriguing, um, area. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And, um, you know, I, I, I think that's a, a fair point and question. So, so let me utilize my, my time here and follow-up to ask staff, is there um, a sense of how we could turn this around? I, I think the points are fairly well-taken in terms of, um, going ahead and applying these minimum, uh, densities. Um, you know, I, I mean, I, I think essentially it's, it's something that, um, if you haven't heard back from the owners, you know, that's, that's a factor to consider, but it's not necessarily something that would, um, would, would, would be, you know, preclusive as to whether we, uh, impart the same kind of designation, uh, as, as we see in the recommendations for the sixteen maps that we're uh, looking to examine. And so, so Piu, you have your, your camera on. Um, any initial reaction to this idea of looking at the Bub Road corridor? Because it's certainly true, we, we've looked at it in the past.
Uh, yes, I, I, I just wanted to make a couple of, uh, remarks about the Bub Road area. This did come up at the Planning Commission level as well. There was interest from the Planning Commission as well in looking at this area. And we did, um, look at the sites there. Um, however, I, I did want to point out that there, Apple actually leases multiple buildings in that area. And, um, they like those buildings particularly because they're one-story tilt-up buildings. And so they can scrape those buildings, which they regularly do on the interiors and redo them every, almost every year, if, if I were, um, you know, if we looked at permit history. Um, they just like those areas because they're so flexible. Um, we also have, uh, two office buildings that direct leases, or onlys, I believe, over there. Um, and so those are two of the office buildings, um, that they have. There is a corp yard that Caltrans has. Um, it is the only Caltrans corp yard on, along the west side, uh, here to service eighty-five and two-eighty. Um, so that is something that they're, they, we, you know, taught, had discussions in the past with them and they don't have no interest in giving that site up. And, um, so then, then there's a church, um, um, that also has property there. And other than that, um, there's one vacant office building, which was in the process of redoing the interiors of that building right before the pandemic, but then the pandemic hit and they hit pause on that construction that they were in the middle of. So, but those Apple buildings are, um, they have long-term leases on those buildings from what I understand.
Okay, so, so Piu, when you say the beginning of the pandemic, that's, that's, that's about two and a half years ago now, right?
Correct. And, and then they are, um, the, that site, particular site is located, I believe, just, um, right next to the, uh, the Caltrans corp yard as well.
Okay. The fact that Caltrans has a corp yard there doesn't mean Caltrans owns the site that's been, right, okay. Okay, um, let's go, uh, to, let's see, we have Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore uh, with hands raised. Like, you know, let's, let's take a look at this, uh, process-wise and, and also timing-wise. We're a little bit before ten o'clock right now. Um, did we want to try to get through a couple of more maps, you know, today to give us a more of a chance to, um, perhaps get through, uh, fewer, uh, than, than half of them tomorrow and allocate a bit of time? Um, what's the, uh, sentiment, uh, here? I, I saw a head nod from Councilmember Willie. I see a head nod from Councilmember Wei. Um, rather than going into a, you know, deeper dive of, uh, discussion at this time, um, I, I, I'm happy to have another few minutes for, uh, council members each if they're interested in sharing some thoughts. Uh, but I think we do have an opportunity to perhaps get through, uh, maps I and J, uh, at the very least this evening. So, um, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. Councilmember Moore, you also have your hand raised. Uh, frankly, I don't remember the order in which you, uh, initially spoke in this round. Councilmember Willie, did you still want to speak as well on, I see your hand is, is up in the Zoom function. Um, and so I don't see a reaction. So I'm going to assume that you're in the queue here. Oh, you can't get it. Okay, you, you look like you're thinking about it. You put in the queue, okay. So, and then Councilmember Wei has now raised her hand as well. So let's, let's, um, let's do this. Um, it, it does seem like there is a desire for another round of comments. Is that correct? Uh, Councilmember Wei, you're looking to make, you know, uh, a, a brief comment? Okay. So let, let, let's do that. And I'll, I'll apply a timer at this time, um, three minutes each. And so Vice Mayor Chow, please proceed.
Okay, so I want to just quickly go through my, the com- the notes I made. So it's put, the staff put, so for map A, um, that we, I think it's a, a good site, but then we should have zoning consideration so that existing retail space, square footage has to be maintained. CBN property, we should have set back requirement from existing single-family homes. And the border wall, bordering wall has to be maintained. For map C, um, I think we should remove this site, which is mini storage plus single-family home. I, um, don't think we need one more site in the area. And for the Qing Qing shopping mall, I think that we should zone it a little more. And in fact, across the street, like this, Jose is zoning that on the Safeway, um, more also. This is their urban village. And I think the ten B on the, at the corner of Danza and Bolinger should also go higher, maybe fifty units per acre because it's a store fair just like Stevens Creek. And map E, those two office sites, I think we should move to tier one because we should encourage more office to be turned into building, especially, um, because of vocal. Even though it's a still young area that's too close to vocal. But then I think it's a rare opportunity. We have office site owners who would like to develop. And map E, uh, the United, I think I got the number mixed up. Anyway, the United, oh, it's the same map, yeah. United Furniture and the gas station, those, I would want to remove them from consideration because they are right across from vocal. I think I would like to keep them retail so we can connect the retail from vocal and to, to have a contiguous retail, uh, strip. That's, even if that will be developed, not this cycle. That's have vocal build and see what's the impact and decide what is suitable in that area. I will, I hope that they revitalize that center. Map F, I would like to move fifteen A, B, and C to tier one, which is the Lee's Garden and B, I'm not sure what's in there. And, uh, C is the Fontana's. Those are, I think it could be moved to tier one and the rest. Uh, fifteen D, E, F, G, I would like to just remove them from this cycle. And the map H at nineteen A, that's currently a single-family home. B, I don't know what's that. I would like to see the twenty, the bowling alley to be moved to, to tier two. On, and then I think the church side, it sounds good, that should be tier one. And map one, the, that's Mary Avenue. I think that the density, since it's right next to the highway, probably could be fifty units since especially we want that to be lower-income housing.
Sorry, Vice Mayor, you're, you're over your three minutes, so let me, um.
That's, uh, the end of my, uh, note.
Okay, great, thanks. And I'll just note, we haven't gotten to map out yet, but, um, let, let's, let's.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
No worries. Um, let's go to Councilmember Willie, then Councilmember Wei.
So I, I'd like, I'd like to stay on the Bub Road stuff. Um, I appreciate that our planning and Piu, they're very good at what they do. I'm in high tech. We're constantly challenged. If we're not challenged, we're not moving forward. If we're not challenged, Japan, Korea, Singapore, China, they're going to move ahead of us. We don't stop at small obstacles. Apple owning or Apple leasing all of those buildings after a pandemic that has changed the landscape for office buildings. I just talked to one of my friends who works at IBM. He goes into the office one day a week. To, to not be pushing hard on Bub Road now I think is, is a huge mistake. And I really think we need to be pushing hard on Bub Road. Caltrans lot is next to, uh, ten one hundred. And that corporate yard is ten one thirty. The corporate yard is two point nine six acres. The vacant, uh, building is point eight seven. You now got almost four acres to deal with now. Caltrans having that corporate yard, Caltrans is the, one of the easiest types of businesses to move to a different site. Anywhere next to, uh, a roadway is perfectly fine. They're not building buildings and tearing down buildings. It's, it's parking spaces for trucks and materials. So Caltrans should know how big of a problem California and the housing crisis is. And here's an opportunity for Caltrans to actually help. Boy, maybe we call, call Gavin Newsom and tell him to talk to Caltrans and, and, um, move two point nine six worth of, uh, their equipment to a different site off of two-eighty. There's a lot of empty land, uh, off of two-eighty. So I, I really think we need to be pushing real hard at, uh, that effort, however we do it. And I, I'd like to go through a couple more maps tonight. Anything that can lighten our load for tomorrow night and use up the time till midnight, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let's go next to Councilmember Wei and then Councilmember Moore.
Um, just a procedural question.
Yes.
If we are adding new sites into our consideration and make a decision tomorrow, are we g- giving our community enough time to respond to it? Because our community is reviewing the sites. For example, um, the Bub Road sites just pop up today. Um, how is the procedure? We're going to let the community review it, make comments on it, and not rushing twenty-four hours?
So, so I, I guess I would jump in here. I mean, the community has had, this has been noticed. The community's had multiple opportunities to weigh in. Ultimately, this is council's decision. You know, there've been multiple rounds of public comment already and, you know, and, um, the people that are here are not necessarily representative of the broader community in any event.
Yeah, so, so I guess Councilmember Wei, it, it just goes back to the general noticing, right? If we're able to talk about this map thirteen or any given area because of the fact that this is noticed as the housing element for the entirety of the city and it has been throughout the entire process, so I think the, the general idea is that people are unnoticed and it's been a continual discussion throughout with that, with that presumption.
Got it. So my question is, when we add new sites, how do we get the community to?
To get some input?
Yeah.
Well, you have, I guess, um, the fact that, you know, again, the noticing is basically through the entirety of, uh, the process. And so, uh, maybe that, maybe that particular set or may, there'll probably be other, you know, areas as well as we continue with our discussion. Right? So, uh, that, that's all part of this process is, I guess, the essential answer there.
So I guess when it comes to tomorrow, uh, with, either we have, we may have multiple new sites that we want to propose. So tomorrow, I guess we let the community know and they can come, because we have to make decisions tomorrow. Is that? Is that the timeline?
There's no definitive timeline in terms of, you know, when we submit for the EIR. It's simply that we've allocated a couple of days here to, you know, see whether we can, you know, reach a consensus as to what the sites are going to be with regard to the EIR. So. Okay, um, let's go next to Councilmember, uh, Moore, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So thinking about Bub Road, um, I was wondering, over the years, um, that Apple's been here, so they've been here, gosh, I guess, since the seventies. Um, how much housing did they, have they built over the years? Or, or lots that they've had, have they sold off, which became housing?
Uh, Councilmember Moore, thanks for the question. And we have Piu. Piu, you have your mic on. Did you want to speak to that?
I believe they develop hardware and software and not necessarily housing, but I'm also not aware of any sites that they have sold for housing at this point. Um, so, uh, none that I'm aware of at this point.
Okay, and, and then there was this, um, news article, many news articles about, um, Apple having two and a half billion dollars to help with the, the housing, um, situation. Did any of that money get invested into affordable housing within Cupertino? Um, or does, does anyone know, there was, I read something about a loan program, was, what, did that, um, Did that happen here? Any affordable housing built by Apple from that $2.5 billion? Because I'm seeing that they, they had sites all over the state, but I'm not aware of any here. And I just might have missed it.
Director Fu, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, like I said, we're, we're not aware of anything. And, and Apple hasn't really reported none of these things to us either. So we, we don't know, I guess, is my answer.
Okay, and then back to the Bub Road question. Are tho, are those leased or owned by Apple? I didn't catch that.
Most of the sites are leased by Apple.
They're leased?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And if, if you were to suggest, because I'd just, you know, even a few years ago, there, the members of the public had indicated to me that they were interested in having a combination retail with some housing up above along Bub Road. And they, they thought that would be a nice area for it. If you were to suggest a density for the housing in, along there, what, what kind of density would you be suggesting? If you're trying to go for a ground floor retail that's going to be viable with the residential above it? Thank you.
I, I, the Bub Road at that point is a single-lane street in each direction. So I, you know, knowing that, I don't know, I would say anywhere between 20 and 30. But 30 is on the really high end for that, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so you're pretty much timed out at exactly three minutes there. So Vice Mayor Chow, you had exhausted your time earlier. So I'm going to go ahead and move over to Councilmember Wei. Did you have any follow-on or is that hand just risen from the prior comments?
I, I would prefer, let's go through the sites that we have, as many as we can. And then we can decide whether we want to add more or, you know, let's, let's work on the sites we have.
Right, so have a couple of, have a, have a couple of maps here. We're at 10:07, so let's go ahead and take a five-minute break at this time before we get into maps I and J. And just to give the public a sense of how this is going to go with regard to the feedback, we'll go through I and J in a similar way that we went through the prior maps. It's just that after we ask our questions about I and then ask our questions about J, the public will have an opportunity to comment on, on both of those maps. So we'll reconvene at 10:13. We'll see you in five minutes, thanks. Okay, we are back. And so now we are going to go into map I. Luke, if you're back as well. I have three on the dais. And so Vice Mayor Chow, welcome back. And so, or Andy, perhaps, I see your screen sharing. So whoever is introducing map I, please, please introduce. Welcome.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine. I'll go ahead and do that, even though Andy's sharing the, the screen.
Great, thanks Luke.
So yes, let's see, this is map I, which has the one site, which is the Mary Avenue right-of-way, which is adjacent to the Westport or the Oaks project. Right now, this is currently literally just that right-of-way. It's not a private parcel yet, but was seen as a good site. Again, a site that could potentially offer some affordable housing opportunities in this area. So, and just for clarification too, I think on previous list, this was listed as a Garden Gate property and is now shown in Heart of the City West. So if there's any confusion on that, I think that resulted from maps that EMC had prepared earlier and in conversion to the city's GIS. So it's the same Mary Avenue site, the right-of-way, that everyone's been looking at, who's followed this process. It's shown at 30 units per acre. It's kind, it's kind of an odd configuration. So with that, that will conclude my comments and let the questions begin.
Thank you, Luke. And the first hand I see up is from Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Wei, did you want to kick us off for questions or comments? Okay, so that seemed to be some residual from previously. Councilmember Willie. And we'll set it to three minutes again for each of these.
Yeah, so boy, I'm going back to three and a half years ago, first being on the council. One of the first emails and meeting requests came from Orrin Mahoney and the Rotary wanting to put this particular site as a, a special site for people with disabilities. Wow, absolutely fantastic. Unfortunately, three and a half years later, it hasn't made much visible progress. But I believe staff should know more about it. The getting the checks done for the amount of land that is actually in the city versus Caltrans or whatever state agency owns it. But where I'm going with this, at that time, my memory is, is that Orrin Mahoney was suggesting that they were hoping to get like 34 units on this site. So that's the reason I'm bringing this up. If, if the map that we're currently looking at is listing it at 22, and yet it was, I believe, 34. The last time I did talk to Orrin Mahoney, which would have been about a year ago, at one of the events here that we had, it may have been the Crest Awards or something here. And he said that they were actually trying to increase it. So if it was originally 34, I don't think they broke the 40 boundary. But I think he was saying they were trying to increase it a little bit and go to 38 or 39. So I just want to put that out there. Staff should be on top of that, I would think. My discussions with Orrin Mahoney was, hey, tell me how I can help move this thing forward, you know? And so it is on our work plan, which I pushed for the last several years, saying, you know, what is, in fact, the quarterly updates. What's the status on the Mary Street project? Because the more we ask, I believe, the more it'll move along, you know, the path. So with that, the Mary Street project, maybe even look at some of those drawings that the Rotary and Orrin have.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And did you want to invite staff for comment and follow-up to what you're saying?
I, I would just hope that they would double-check where they're at with that and what's the latest housing count hoped for.
And then you have about 20 seconds remaining if you wanted to hold back. So let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so thank you, Councilmember Willie, for bringing the Mary Avenue project up. Yeah, so I was wondering if, if we're seeing, which I don't think we are, Outback Steakhouse site in this list? Is, is, is that in here? Because that was the, the other kind of alternative location for, for having some, the county had purchased it potentially for some ELI units even? Any comment on that?
I think, is, is selling the eastern border of this? I'm not sure if the Outback Steakhouse is, but Director Fu or Pue or, or Luke?
Just to answer the Councilmember Moore's question about the Outback Steakhouse site, that is not included on the inventory as either tier one or tier two.
Okay, so is it a foregone conclusion that, that there'll be this negotiation for daycare at Outback Steakhouse and the Simeon property will develop? Is that, is that what's going on?
I wish I had a little more information on that to answer your question, Councilmember Moore, but I'm not privy to what's going on in those negotiations.
Okay, it just seems that we should include it, otherwise we're making some assumptions. Especially if the Simeon property is, they are interested and the county owns Outback, in which they purchased for housing. And it's, I thought it was, I thought it was about an acre, but I could be wrong. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. You were at just under two minutes, so you have a little over a minute left. Any other comments on map I? Vice Mayor Chow.
I'm also curious, so what exactly is the reason Outback was not included?
I do not know if I have a specific answer on the, why that site was not on the list. I don't remember any particular discussion about the site being on or off the list.
I, I can try to help answer that question. We, we actually talked to the county about that, about the housing element process as well. And we did not receive interest, owner interest on developing that particular site, which is why it didn't end up on the, the list. However, the property owner for the Simeon did.
That has not, but that has not stopped us from adding site.
It is entirely the council's prerogative. We did not think that that would be something that, we didn't bring forward that particular site at this time.
I still don't understand, how is that? There are, there were other sites on tier one that, that had no owner interest. And this is a good size. And so are there other concerns?
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. You're at 1:15 with a minute forty-five left. Let me go back to my zoom to see hands. Councilmember Wei.
Yes, I'd like to bring back to the Mary site. It does look like Rotary had started this long time ago and it is on our work plan. I, if I understand it correctly, we have a RFP out for the Mary site or not?
That's correct.
Okay, and it is for 22 units or more?
The RFP doesn't specify the number of units. We, that would be part of the proposal and/or.
Okay, so the 22 maybe is the minimum and so it could go up more?
The 22 is a minimum and it also would not include potential density bonus units.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. That's what I want to clarify, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. That was right about half a minute with a couple and a half minutes left. So let me just reset my clock here. Okay, so let me verify, where would the, where would that Outback Steakhouse shopping center be? Which map, have we, have we reached it? Because it looks like we're west of that right now. So if we were to talk about it later, which, which map are we talking about here? I, I would expect that, you know, Luke, you or Andy would have that information readily available with regard to which map we're talking about. But if, if neither of you do, look it up, let us know, you know, later. I'm, I'm scrolling back through the maps and it doesn't look like any of them that we've seen so far covers that particular area. But let me ask a more specific question on this. I mean, to, to the point that was raised earlier, I mean, we don't know precisely what's going to happen, but we do know that the county purchased the site with an eye on affordable housing. And so what harm would it have, even if we did put it on this, you know, suite of sites for environmental impact review? Director Fu?
Yeah, I, I don't suppose there's any harm, but I want to invite Andy, if you have any comments on, on whether there'll be any, any comments from ACD on this particular site if we do place it as a tier one or tier two site.
There certainly wouldn't be a problem with it being a tier two site. And, and that way, as, whatever transpires or this site progresses in this next nine months, we'll be at a position to easily add it as a tier one if, if, if that's what the council desires, or we could do so sooner than that. I don't foresee an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's still, I mean, given, given what we know of the site, right? I mean, there's obvious owner interest in development, right? I mean, the county owns it, they got it for affordable housing. I mean, that, that's, that's indisputable, right? I mean, that's kind of, if we were to be looking at, we would put a, you know, mark on it. I, I mean, I, I want to make sure that we're netting a better benefit, but at the same time, you know, there is uncertainty out there. I mean, we, and we shouldn't be pre-packaging, you know, assumptions, that's, that's true. So I, I mean, I, I just, I reiterate the question, what would be the harm in, you know, taking you through that, you know, particular exercise? So in any event, that's my question and comment. Let me go ahead and move back to Councilmember Willie, then Councilmember, the order here was Councilmember Willie, Moore, Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Wei, and then myself. But I've exhausted my time, so let me, let me go back to Councilmember Moore. I'm sorry, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I think I'm finished on this site. Great, you know, it's still on here. Just, I would think that we should be listing it at a higher number.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make note of the fact that you did say that you thought it was 34 units and your conversation led you to believe that it was even more than that. So Councilmember Moore, did you want to follow up on your comments? Any other comments?
Just a little bit. It's kind of a request for staff, because I remember this was, we had kind of an unusual, maybe perhaps it was a Friday meeting that we, that we held, where we discussed this, the Outback Steakhouse property and the, the notion of the Simeon property and a potential kind of an exchange there. So if staff, someone from staff can send the, or, or look up what the date was, because I'd like to see the agenda for that particular item. I know there wasn't a lot, a lot provided. Most of it was in the report. So I'd like to hear that, because I, I want to just jog my memory about that meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, well, so that'll be instruction follow-up. I'm sure that's not readily available off the top of anyone's head. So let's go ahead and move to Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I want to clarify, the purpose of identifying all these sites right now is we need to do an EIR, to do an environmental impact study. And then anything that's included could potentially be developed later so that we have studied them. So therefore, it seems to be essential that we include Outback. Because if it has a potential to be developed, we want to study that, right? And then we might add additional sites. Now, it doesn't mean they are included or not included. It just means that study that. And when the EIR comes back, we will still have the chance to adjust tier one or tier two, even though the recommendation from, I think, the staff is to try and finalize tier one. But it's not set in stone. That is, is my understanding correct? That we are therefore adding sites even now? Just means adding sites so we can study them, right?
Yeah, let's, let's just clarify the question. And I think Vice Mayor Chow's question is essentially, if we, if we select this, you know, or any given site for environmental impact review analysis, that doesn't commit us to including it into the housing element, the final housing element? Is that correct? Luke, you have your mic on?
Yeah, yes, that could be correct. I also wanted to just clarify that you're in a position tonight to add sites. If there were a site that is not on the inventory, such as the Outback Steak site, that's not listed as tier one or tier two, it is certainly the council's prerogative to include that on the list as either tier one or tier two. And your earlier question, Mayor Paul, on the maps, why the Outback Steak site is not shown anywhere, I believe that's because it's in the North D'Anza area and there are no properties at all on the inventory in North D'Anza.
Do you happen to know what map that is? Just map number off the original?
There is, there is no, there is no map included. That, that's the reason it's not showing up, because there are no sites for that map.
No, I mean, not, not within this, you know, kind of A through whatever it is framework, the sixteenth letter, but the, within the twenty-six. I thought the original twenty-six maps included every area of Cupertino.
Yes, let me, that would be area twenty-two.
Area twenty-two, okay. Okay, great. I think, Andy, you have your hand up. Did you want to follow up on?
Yes, if I may, I also want to suggest that when we, when we do initiate the CEQA, the Environmental Impact Report, we do have an opportunity to set forth different alternatives. So there, there can be opportunities to, to develop different groups of, or approaches or strategies for meeting. Yes.
So, so just, you know, with regard to the CEQA analysis, that doesn't commit us to particular, you know, sites at that point? I mean, it just kind of keeps our options open. It seems like if we were to add more, is that, is that a fair statement?
It is, and we also want to be a little strategic because we don't want to have, you know, two hundred percent of our arena as, as a single approach or strategy or alternative because then our mitigation might actually overwhelm the reality of that hundred percent of arena. So we just have to be strategic about how we put forth our, our different alternatives so that all of the sites that we're looking to measure can be measured, and, and we can do so in a way that is going to result in appropriate environmental mitigation.
Okay, great. Thanks. Next, we have, I think, Councilmember Way, did you have your hand up, or was it taken down? Oh, okay. So Councilmember Willie, you had your hand up, but now it's down. So let's go ahead and close out map H and move on to, map I rather. Let's close out map I for now and move on to map J. And Luke, did you want to give us a brief overview again on map J, which looks like it is the South Deansa Boulevard Special Area?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. So yeah, the South Deansa area has, as you can see, by far the most total properties. This is a uniformly among the Tier One sites at fifty units per acre. Again, this was one of the corridors where the Planning and Housing Commission's recommended a split density with fifty towards the street, thirty towards the west side of the properties. So if you were to combine that, you'd come up with an overall average of forty units per acre. I just want to be sure that people realize there was no forty recommendation, but that's what would happen if you were to do the split zoning. We have quite a few properties, I think, as you can see, starting with twenty-three A through L. There are some Tier Two sites on here as well. I think twenty-three F notably is the Summer Winds Nursery, which there was some discussion at the Housing and Planning Commission meetings where we had both the Yamagami's and Summer Winds nurseries involved in the discussion. The owners of Yamagami's, I believe, right during the course of that meeting submitted an owner interest form to be included on the housing sites list, which is why Yamagami's is listed as a Tier One site and Summer Winds is a Tier Two site. So that, there, I'm sure will be some questions about this, given that this is a, one of our larger areas in terms of number of sites and potential number of units. And with that, I will turn it over to questions.
Thank you, Luke. So let's go to councilor questions or comments. Councilmember Way.
A quick question. So of all these sites, only the Yamagami's owner has expressed interest? None of the other owners have expressed any interest? Oh, there's another one.
Yeah, I believe there are three in total.
Okay, and the rest just not responding, or they said no, or they just not being responsive?
Not responsive. We haven't gotten any, any indications of people who did not want to be included, but we, we have reached out and done some follow-up on this area and have not received responses from other property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. That's about forty seconds. So let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So on the, on the east side, we're looking at the Deansa Urban Village from the city of San Jose for a good part of what we're looking at here. And they've, they, they have the large senior living complex. I don't know if they've completed that yet, but it looked like they had, like, like a zero, zero setback from the back of sidewalk. So has anyone from staff looked into what the development plans are on the, the east side of Deansa Boulevard? Will it be more like what we're seeing? Because they're, they're really not, not, not being the best neighbors, to put it kindly. So is, are we, can we expect more of that type of development that's really close to the street and tall like that?
I'll try to answer that. I don't know that we have an indication of the scale of the development, but I believe there's about a dozen properties on the east side of Deansa Boulevard in the San Jose city limits that are now shown on their website. I don't know the density and height that they've specified. I do know that they have a map on their website that showed, again, I believe it's about, it may be nine sites comprised of about a dozen properties. I would assume the scale of development is probably going to be pretty similar and urban in nature in terms of being multi-story. I would, I would assume densities that are probably going to be in the fifty-unit range and up from there.
Up from, pardon?
And, and I, and above that, I would assume. I would assume that that's the case. I, I know, well, for instance, in West San Jose, there was a project completed about two years ago near Santana Row on Winchester Boulevard near Williams. It's a five-story apartment development called Lynn Haven, and the density for that is eighty-three per acre. So just to put that out there as a recent five-story development, that was the density. We can certainly try to learn more because the sites were, have only been up, I want to say, for a few weeks at this point.
Thirty seconds.
So if we can learn some more about the, the nature of them, we'd be happy to. But yes, San Jose is definitely going to be putting some housing sites along this corridor.
Thank you, Luke. I was wondering if you could get, get, to get us the link, or just tell us where on their site is, I gather it's part of their housing element that you found this?
Yes, correct. It is part of their housing element on their, on their webpage.
Okay, because I, we think, I think we really need to know what they're doing on the, on the other side of the street, and for balancing purposes, for scale, all, all that, it really will make a difference for, for what that Boulevard is, is, will be like in the future. Thank you.
Time, thanks. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I think, I think there were, there, there, there is a construction going on, on the east side of Deansa next, right next to the eighty-five, right? Do we know what's the density of that building and height?
I, I do not know the density or the height, but I believe if you're referring to, it's a, I believe, a senior housing development.
Oh, it's a senior housing? Yeah, I don't know. So, and then I heard there was a intent to develop one of the guest station that there were residents who were writing about those. And so I think we really need to know what San Jose has planned for these areas that's right next to Cupertino. Please just contact them to find out. I think they have Deansa Urban Village, and then along Bolinger, there is another urban, Bolinger Urban Village that has the Safeway Shopping Mall. We, we need that, those information. And then similarly, on, on the board side that's bordering Sunnyvale, are, are there other development being planned by Sunnyvale? And in Saratoga, I think they also placed some development near the northern part of the, near Prospect Road. I wish, yeah, so I think we should have some idea what's coming, and these are likely should all be included in the EIR, right? So would our EIR include all this potential upcoming development from neighboring cities in the study?
Yeah, environmental impact reports typically look at if other cities have proposed development abutting your city limits, you, you would be looking at that. You essentially look at all of the cumulative impacts and any project that is known that could affect, say, you know, traffic or things that are regional, you need to take into account all that you're aware of, and how that's going to affect your, your conditions in the future.
Yeah, great. So, yeah, I think probably information won't be available tomorrow, but this is some information we need to get from our neighboring cities. Thank you. And then for these particular sites.
You're at thirteen.
Yes, I'm just wondering, why are we identifying so many sites with, when there is no owner interest particularly in this area? So this is because of the recommendation by the Planning Commission?
I think that's partially true because there was, again, a desire to try to have sites. While in some ways this is right down the middle, we sort of looked at Deansa Boulevard as the east-west divide, and this was one area on the west side, so to speak, where you, you had development opportunity between Prospect Road and Highway eighty-five along South Deansa Boulevard. A lot of the other western, western side of the city, it was largely single-family or did not have as many properties that appeared to be viable housing sites.
I'm curious.
You're well over time, Vice Mayor Chow. Let me go ahead and turn this over to Councilmember Willie if you have any comments on this map or questions.
I'll cede my time.
You'll cede your time, okay. So let me go ahead and ask my question or questions. So I'm noticing that the pipeline project here is listed in, elsewhere in the packet as, I think it was seventy-three fifty-seven Prospect. Yes, seventy-three fifty. So is that the entire shopping center there, or is that some other site? I, I'm looking at Coach House and, you know, a couple of parking areas there.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please go.
It is the buyer shopping center plus the parking lot at the back.
Okay, so, you know, just looking at the acreage, or at least the relative size to other parcels, and then looking at what the pipeline information has, it, it seems to be a bit, so, so basically, the total net new units, and it doesn't look like there are housing units on there right now, on page one seventy-one of the packet, is thirty-four? What's the dwelling unit per acre density at thirty-four units on this site?
I believe it rounds out to about twenty-two, maybe?
Okay, so that's a submitted project right now?
Correct. That is under review.
And so what's the, what's the configuration? Is that townhomes or is that something else?
I believe they have eleven townhomes at the rear, and the balance is in condos up front, or rental units up front.
Is there any retail in that, or is it pretty much all?
There is some ground floor of retail that abouts South Deansa, but a small amount.
Okay, how, how much of an amount relative to the amount of retail that's there at the moment?
Probably between twenty-five and thirty percent of what's there.
Twenty-five to thirty percent, okay.
Maybe a little bit more, but, but significantly smaller than what it is.
Okay, okay. Where's it at in the submission process again?
It's still under review. There's still environmental review that needs to be prepared and things like that.
How long has it been under review?
I'd have to look into that.
Is it, is it years, or is it months?
So they, they had, I believe they only submitted an application maybe earlier this year.
Okay.
So like a completed application.
Okay, so they've been going, going through the application process for some time now?
At least a few months, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think it would be good to have a little bit more information on that if you don't mind providing it. I mean, just in terms of when an application was first submitted. Has there been a reach out for owner interest with regard to, you know, this particular process? And I, I'd just like to see what the timeline is, and if you can get the information with regard to the, the retail component there of what they're proposing as well.
And I believe Luke may have had a conversation with them about the site, so Luke, do you want to fill us in?
Yeah, thank you, Pew. I was just going to try to jump in on that. I, I don't have an answer on the retail square footage, but I believe it was last month I had a conversation with the architect, and the developer was involved, where it pointed out that given its location and listing as a housing site, that greater density was possible. So Pew is correct that there's townhomes along the western edge, which the developer sounded committing to keeping those because they're an interface with the single-family homes. But they may be open to the idea, and I'm just saying, based on that conversation of adding additional density as you get closer to the Deansa Boulevard corridor. Because I had pointed out the fifty unit per acre, which was recommended by the Planning Commission uniformly, so there may be a chance that the project could be revised to include more units based on that.
Okay, thanks. With this much density being proposed, are you looking at any kind of, a, a, any kind of, you know, walkability or bikability improvements? Or is that something that is also kind of related to, you know, traffic analysis and other expertise?
That would be part of the analysis that the Transportation Division would be looking at.
Okay, and when does that get triggered here with regard to being part of our conversation?
So I'll have to look into see whether this is screened out from transportation impacts, but if not, then they would have to include that and incorporate that as part of their mitigation measures.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this, this even worse than Bolinger, I think, also kind of begs the question of what do we do with, with potential interoperability with San Jose? I mean, with Bolinger, I mean, it would be, it would have been nice to kind of maybe, you know, have some kind of ability to have enhanced signalization, but I mean, we're talking about multiple jurisdictions, and on the other side of that is residential. But here, there seems to be a different situation where the city on the other side of the street is looking to do, you know, kind of something very similar. What are your plans for interfacing with San Jose with regard to kind of, hopefully more seamlessly, you know, synergize our respective plans? I, I think that's just an extension essentially of, of Councilmember Moore's question, but I think asked in a little bit of a different way. You know, is there a conversation happening with regard to trying to, you know, compatibilize, if you will, you know, what's going on, on the west side and on the east side of the, of the major thoroughfare here?
So I can actually confirm, I don't believe there are any housing element sites in, on this stretch of San Jose that they're looking at. There are some sites actually on Prospect, a little bit east, kind of where that table is, where it's sixty-five foot height underneath there. There's one site.
Are you sure? There's nothing on the direct east side of, of?
Not in this stretch. So there are about eight or nine sites north of eighty-five, where San Jose has both sides of the right-of-way through to Bolinger. San Jose, frankly, you know, they have a zero setback at Deansa, as you can tell from the building that they're constructing right now.
Right.
So they, we actually sent letters when they were in the process of reviewing that project to ask for some sort of, you know, consideration for the fact to ask for some sort of uh, you know, consideration for the fact that we actually have a fifty-foot um setback here in in the South De Anza area. Um, that is, of course, something that we'll have to probably reevaluate if this all gets upzoned to fifty-one minutes to the acre. Um, because again, it'll be a trade-off between setbacks and height. So, but with that said, I I don't believe San Jose is looking to uh increase their setbacks on their side.
Okay, and and I was also thinking about the um context of road improvements as well. I mean, you know, it's going to be fairly significant programming here, so. Uh, another interface with, you know, traffic analysis and um, you know, potentially, you know, things that we can do infrastructurally to our roads. So um, I see hands raised again. I'm sorry, did you want to respond briefly to that or?
No, that will all be evaluated as part of the environmental review. I mean, there is a right turn only lane in this stretch of South De Anza Boulevard, so it'll be interesting to see how um, you know, uh, the whole area is planned um to allow cars to get out safely.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to have a cohesive plan so that it doesn't just end up with a hodgepodge of density here and there, right? So. Um, Councilmember, huh, go back to my notes in terms of the ordering here. Um, so Councilmember White, you started it out, you didn't use too much time, then Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Chow. So did you have a follow-on? Okay, Councilmember White. Oh, go ahead, yeah, Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have two questions. The first one, when we talk about San Jose interface with them, I think we should also look into the Saratoga City's housing plans. They might have some housing close to where we are on Prospect and Sunnyvale Saratoga Road. Maybe we could look into that um and do a joint traffic study or E I R or something like that. The second question is about the P four. Um, I was looking at, it says carriage house with thirty-four units of housing. It, does that include dense height uh density bonus or are we looking at more housing in that site?
The thirty-four units does include a density bonus.
Okay, so but you said um it's possible that we might be able to um offer a little bit more density along the uh De Anza Boulevard, facing the Enza Boulevard, is is that?
If the council is interested in increasing the density in this corridor, um, they might be interested. I think their major concern is parking, the cost of parking eventually.
Right, so right now it's like um thirty per acre or?
I think it's twenty-two with a density.
Twenty-two, okay.
It's about twenty.
The existing uh density is fifteen, correct, Luke?
Yes, the existing is, I I believe the project um as described is about twenty per acre.
So if we would like to increase it, we could um, is our council's discretion to maybe increase to thirty if if we like to do that, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember White, and we are next at Councilmember Moore. And um Councilmember Willie had uh, you know, his time, so he was uh, you know, donating it a little bit, okay, so. He liked to keep a bit. Okay, sounds good. So let's go ahead and go back to Councilmember Moore and then um, or would you like to take that time first, Councilmember Willie, since you haven't to asked yet or commented yet?
Um, yeah, I think it uh dovetails just uh fairly well. Um, you might know, does that De Anza Boulevard, San Jose uh area, is that an extent? Is that part of Chappie's district?
It is, yes, West San Jose.
So that being said, just tossing out a comment, you know, to be, you know, to try and get some dovetailing going there. If uh staff in their communications with the San Jose staff, which sounds like you're asking for, included the San Jose mayor and the uh San Jose district. Is he vice mayor now?
He's vice mayor, yeah.
But the district uh councilman for that area, if you guys are copied, uh, staff might be more inclined to look at um being contiguous or or um somewhat helpful to each one.
I agree, no, I think the timing is really good for it too, so. Okay, uh, thanks for the comment. So let's go back to Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow, we have a couple more minutes, so let's go ahead and um divvy that up. So, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you. So I so I did send um the clerk, um Kirsten, an email. I'm not sure if it's arrived, but it it shows the um, I did find the housing element site inventory. Uh, they have it on on, I guess it's their G I S maps. Um, so I've been looking at that and they have a number of lower-income sites which extend down from um on South De Anza Boulevard, so uh and they seem to have a a layer also showing their previous ones. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So there's there's a number of sites. These are listed as lower-income sites. Um, I was just looking at their their mapping a little bit. Um, it's kind of interesting where they decided to put moderate income sites, which is uh further over more towards downtown area. And out here, we don't have any any of the mixes, it's all lower-income sites. Um, thought that was kind of interesting. Uh, but some are actually on the west side of of De Anza. Um, which is it's kind of interesting how the border goes. Um, anyway, I just thought that that we could have a have a quick look at that.
Yeah, and and I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, so on the lower left-hand corner of the brighted-out portion of the map there, it does look like there is one site, right? It's a lower-income site. I I think that should be the.
Prospect?
Yeah, that isn't that the map that we're looking at right now? Or at least on the other side of uh De Anza Boulevard along Prospect?
Well, that's that's on the east side of Prospect. So Danza, below the eighty-five, that's Danza is the vertical line.
Right. And and you know, granted, it's not directly off of De Anza Boulevard, but I guess, yeah.
It's a good-sized lot. I totaled them up, all of those lots is that is are nine-point-one-seven acres. Um, the whole strip that that you can see there. So there's a good number of units that'll be going in. Um, okay, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to uh finish up with a brief comment or a question?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
So. And thank you, Councilmember Moore, for sharing that. I'm really curious now how San Jose determine what sites is considered a low-income or moderator or what it seems we are not separating them according to this. It would be interesting to know that. And then my main question is uh for this map uh right now, would we show the map again? Twenty-three, the site twenty-three?
Uh, looks like, uh, yeah, if we could put.
The second one, yeah. The second site, twenty-three. Um, oh, I can share.
Yeah, I mean, whoever has access, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a second site, twenty-three. We have multiple sites that has no owner interest, so I'm one, I don't know what are the existing uses and then do they have long-term lease? Do we know?
When you say second site, what do you, wh- which?
Um, second page. There are two pages, that's site twenty-three. I mean, the second page, so I have shared, that's okay. The second page of um site twenty-three. Um. So these, there are multiple sites, right? All except one has own owner, has, I mean, all have no owner interest. So what are there, are these all commercial sites?
Yes, these are all commercial properties along here, there are no housing sites. I uh twenty-three I, I know is the paint store.
Yeah, it seems we keep asking the same question, that's wasting a lot of time. If we can get a list of twenty-three G was store, twenty-three H was store, then that would be clear. One glance, I, we have some idea. Now, do they have long-term leases that we? No.
I'm I'm not aware of any on these sites. I I don't think they're they're not in the same situation as you were talking about on Bub Road with Apple.
Uh, why is that? Don't they also have long-term leases too with these stores?
I uh, so if I may, um, I I some of these sites we had owner interest from at the last housing element cycle. Um, the Kelly Moore site uh was is a recently leased, uh, recent lease. I'm not exactly sure how many years is on it, but um that that was occupied only uh maybe right before the pandemic or during the pandemic, maybe even. Um, the Kinder Care site is a is a very, the Kinder Care site.
Which which side is what you are talking about?
I I then, I can't read, I'm sorry, on the screen, this is very tiny, but it is the um of the two yellows at the bottom, thank you, twenty-three J. That is the Kinder Care site. Um, that is a very popular um childcare center. Um, I'm trying to find out if they own that particular site or not. I I think they they, for that one, they probably have a long-term lease on that one. Um, it's a ve- very, very popular uh childcare site. Twenty-three K is a parking lot um that is associated with the office building next door that is not shaded in. Um, uh, twenty-three I is the Kelly Moore store. Twenty-three F is the Summer Winds Nursery. Um, twenty-three H is the Red Barn, if you've ever gone um driven down South uh South De Anza. There's a kitchen and kitchen bathroom remodel store in there right now.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I mean, just um, it hopefully we will, we we have um a doc with this because I can't remember everything, but that's fine. So another question is regarding the pipeline project. So we, are we reaching out to them to invite them to join Housing Element to be considered for rezoning to higher density since they are missing, it seems they are missing this opportunity, maybe they would consider?
We have, we've we've actually reached out to them multiple times and have not heard back from them.
The pipeline sites?
Uh, uh, not just.
I mean, the pipeline site. I mean, it seems we are including a lot of people who have a proposal, they really want to build. Then how, as a result, they are missing this opportunity of many of these other sites are being zoned, um thirty units upzoned to more and thirty. So, but then this, who are already in the pipeline, don't, didn't get that benefit, that seems to be unfair to them. So did we offer them that they can be considered for Housing Element? Or are they declining that because they want to get going quickly?
Okay, let's let's wrap, let's wrap, let's let's, yeah, just ask the question.
I think the short answer is yes, we did. In one case, one of the pipeline projects actually wanted to develop a higher-density project, it was on McClellan. In one case, the developer did not want to. So we've we've certainly had those discussions.
So it seems, I think, in in the interest of E I R, we should consider pipeline sites for higher density too, because in case they change their mind in a year, they could be rezoned. Because if we don't study, we don't know, right? We would, I mean, we can even consider in case they want to join. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And Councilmember Willie, you had your hand raised, was that from before? Okay, let's do this uh at this time, let's go to our members of the public. And uh, we did just go over Maps I and J, and so we'll uh open up an opportunity for members of the public to uh share their perspectives. And so let's go ahead and uh go to Lisa Warren on Zoom, who is the only hand-raised. And so uh, please, the remaining members of the public here, please raise your hand uh before Lisa's done speaking, if you want to be recognized to speak. Uh, and same goes with regard to the blue cards and the uh email to the city clerk at cityclerk@cupidino.org uh during the time that the first person is speaking. So um, Lisa, welcome, you have three minutes.
Thanks, okay, so um, I just want to ask, this is a general thing. I heard earlier that across the board, I think is what I heard, the target density and the target heights need to be corrected on all these maps because they all basically say the same, what was determined to be incorrect. Um, heights for the density. So if that could be addressed and confirmed. So I've asked her a few times to please take care of paying attention to what San Jose, the city of San Jose is doing on Stevens Creek, because they have big sites there that are also on the urban village list. And so maybe Councilmember Moore could look up that in their in their site and tell us what they've got going on there, because that's a big deal, especially if you're considering in any way, shape or form of adding those type tier-two sites to be tier-one, which I think would be a mistake unless you take United Furniture out altogether, which may not be a mistake. Um. And then in in relation to the United Furniture site, it was indicated that there is owner interest for the furniture site parcels, but not for the gas station. To my knowledge, it is still the same owner, it has been on the market. I've been told recently that, well, the city's been told recently that it is in in contract with someone um to purchase. So I'm wondering who has indicated the answer, is the current owner or the potential future owner? And the motivation between either one of those answers. Um. Twenty-one, sorry, I don't have that note, the dog ate it. Um. The Kelly Moore site, you know, the term underutilized is used often in these situations, and I can tell you the Kelly Moore site is completely underutilized. They took over Granite Rock. Basically, their materials were there, they had, you know, housed materials for Granite Rock, and they had a huge showroom with examples of what could be done and yada, yada. They took up that whole building. Kelly Moore works out of the very front. And the back is, they store, y- you look back in the back and there's a few cans amongst a lot of empty space. So I, and I, I think it was Pew that said earlier that Planning Commission upped thirty dwelling units per acre in most of those twenty-three map sites. And that's, I have noticed that they did the same, but that's not reflected in what the August ninth chart says. There's still some thirties in there. So I don't know if that's a mistake or there were some exceptions later.
Lisa, thank you very much. Next, we have Scott Connolly, and before we get to Scott, Madam City Clerk, were there any blue cards or members of the public that emailed you during the time that Lisa was speaking?
No, ma'am.
All right, so Scott, you'll be uh next, and you're the remaining speaker on this tranche of public comment, welcome.
Hi there, everybody. Uh, just a kind of a random question about the shortfall of very low and moderate units right now. So I'm trying to understand or get a context. So with respect to future development potential of non-pipeline sites on the recommended sites inventory that are targeted for thirty D U an acre or above. In this case, it's thirty or fifty, it generally seems like it's shaking out at. How should property owners of these sites that are on the call tonight understand how affordability restrictions might play into their site's future development potential? In other words, is it safe to assume that when you have property owner interest from, say, the Yamagami Nursery site at fifty units an acre, the list is showing a total of a hundred-and-twenty-one units or, you know, Mr. Cooper's Kelly Moore Paint Site? That these sites will essentially be a hundred percent affordable housing sites? Um, i- is that the intent when you're looking at these sites on De Anza Boulevard that can take perhaps higher density than other sites in the city? I think it's important to understand, and I think that to date, there haven't been a lot of discussions about how all of these sites were going through at thirty or fifty ultimately play out to to how many affordable units are going to be needed to be at the site. And I'd love to know, is is it a requirement or is it just, you know, hey, this is a fifty-unit an acre site and as long as you meet the fifteen percent in lieu requirement, everybody's square? Because that's going to hurt potentially the shortfall you're trying to solve. Um, so I think understanding how that map will work. So I think understanding how that math will work, and then when that math will be will be shown, I think would be uh, would be valuable. And I think in this last site that we looked at, I mean, there are sites on there like, you know, Summer Winds, that's owned by the corporate nursery parent. You know, and you've got Jack in the Box on there that has been there since I was in high school thirty years ago. And there might be sites that are getting set up for H C D to say, well, there's a long-term lease on that, so we're not going to accept it. And so um, I just say that uh, with all due respect, but I I'm just curious if you could comment on how that affordability, when you're talking in thirty-plus unit an acre, of what the city's expectation is? Because I think in the context of this, it's to solve that fifteen-hundred unit shortfall of very low and moderate. Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, really good question, Scott, so um, I, you you know, we alluded to this earlier, uh, but with regard to the the dwelling units per acre density, once you reach a certain threshold, and that's thirty dwelling units per acre, statutorily, you have a certain presumption uh, for the purposes of the uh, housing element and and zoning uh, and, you know, potential invocation, that you do have uh, very low income and low-income affordability. Now, you know, I think we all know that the reality of that is that from a practical standpoint in the market, that that's not accurate. However, um, one thing that doesn't really get, I think, um, sufficient shrift uh, out there in 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 the narrative about the city of Cupertino is that we have a very robust inclusionary zoning requirement. And our policy has been uh, quite um, quite strong in practice um, and and in our our municipal code to uh, have that inclusionary zoning um, in there uh, with regard to um, trying to make sure that the developers uh, for the fifteen percent requirement that we have for rental units, I believe it's twenty percent for owner-occupied units, um, you know, have those uh, ha, and maybe have those percentages reversed, if I do, I apologize, but um, so so I I think that's the essentially complete answer to that. Um, there's no additional threshold at fifty dwelling units per acre that confer any presumptions um, in the statutes as far as I'm aware, but if um, if there is, I'm sure the city attorney would let us know. And if I've said anything inaccurate, please, you know, feel free to, you know.
Yeah, no, thirty is thirty is the relevant threshold.
Yeah, so thirty, we're 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 good at the thirty dwelling units per acre, you know, threshold. And, you know, I I'd imagine you probably had a, you know, good point in um, you know, raising that uh, you know, Scott, and yeah, I would equally imagine that you you probably, you know, essentially you you knew the answer to the question. But but it's it's good to articulate clearly uh, to the public for, you know, the purposes of what we're doing here, because so much is premised upon that minimum um, you know, dwelling unit per acre uh, density that we're we're undertaking. So um, you know, we're at eleven thirteen, um, I'm going to go ahead and take uh, some follow-on comments from from council right now, but I think having gone through um, ten of the sixteen uh, regions of the map that we're looking to go through from an initial perspective, uh, we're in pretty decent shape at this point. Um, and I think staff will take advisedly some of those, you know, desires from um, you know, from members of the public as well as council to look at possibly a couple of other, you know, parts, you know, the Bub Road corridor uh, to examine that. Um, and and uh, I think it was map twenty-two that Andy had indicated would encompass also the the Outback Stakes out, Stakeout Site. Um, and so uh, let's go um, for some follow-on comments at this point from council, if there are any. And Vice Mayor Chow, I see your hand is raised, did you have? And so, yeah, everyone's hand has has gone up at this point, so let's go uh, in the order of Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Wei, uh, and then myself. Councilmember.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Chow.
So it's all already eleven, so I'd like to share some potential sites that I hope will be considered. I actually have mentioned this to staff a few times, and I have been waiting when it will be on the council agenda, so I can suggest this and finalize it here. And so this is a site that's to the west of Post Office. It's three parcels that uh, they are too small, but then as since the staff is considered parcel consolidation, even when there is no owner interest, then I think this is a valid site to be considered. And so this is uh, the acreage from those sites. And then the next one is uh, south of the Post Office, I think that building is kind of also old. It could be considered for um, improvement. I, so this this particular site is point five-six acre. Um, I'm just throwing out the idea, I don't really have a strong feeling whether this should be included or not included, but I just thought similar sites have been included in other areas of the city, it seems it should, it's only fair to consider this because there is very little site considered in this area. And uh, for this one, also, it's a similar site, but then if you consolidate three sites together, that's uh, the acreage there, that you can make a bigger site. And then this is a Bob Road area that um, Councilmember Willie mentioned. Many of these sites are actually pretty big in size. There is one site even owned by uh, Santa Cruz uh, is extension, so I wonder if they have interest. Um, I think whether there is long-term lease or not, whether there is interest, we really should seriously consider these sites. Otherwise, it's really not fair to the other areas of the city where we did include those sites, even in tier-one, when there is no owner interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, that, that actually uh, i- is very good, thank you, Vice Mayor. That was kind of, once again, going to encompass what I was going to to uh, refer to, where I really like the maps that we're going through, and for consistency's sake, uh, having those maps um, for these sites that we're talking about, uh, looking at, may not make it. But as long as we're going to be looking at them, I'd like to see the equivalent maps with the uh, the table, the uh, uh, possible units that could be explored. Um, and then I would really hope that, and if it can't happen by tomorrow night, I understand it, but I would really hope that we would be told by staff, what is this uh, um, engagement with the property owners? I I'd really like to know, hearing that um, no feedback from from the owner, to how much did they really try to to contact the owners? Um, I'd really like to understand that a lot better. To me, that's just fundamental for for all of these sites. And so I'll leave it at that, tomorrow night, we do it again.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, this might take me just a second, but I want I want to um, going back to the original presentation that we had, there was the Reno table for Cupertino, and for Valco SB thirty-five, it's showing um, the very low income at three sixty-one and low income at eight hundred and forty, just give me one second. Uh, when I went to the rise affordability table, and this was something that if I if I did not complain about, I should have, um, when I go to the rise affordability table, um, their summary of affordable units is uh, V L I two sixty-seven and um, low income at nine thirty-four. Uh, so I want, uh, I would like staff to um, double-check that. Um, because our our very low-income situation isn't isn't as good as we think it is. Okay, so I just want to have that double-checked, um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, just very briefly, um, I think was mentioned by other, a couple of other council members, that our um, entitled properties, we might be able to offer them some more density. Um, especially, I'm looking at the uh, Westport, the last portion that was sold to Taylor Morrison for ADA rowing row homes and um, townhomes. Um, that neighborhood is really by the freeway and the dock part and apartments adjacent to the park. I wonder if we could offer them a little more density, so that we could have a little more housing in that area right across from Dianza College, maybe some dorms for the students type of thing, or even teacher housing. And I don't know about the Marina Food Site, um, it's probably in the process. I wonder if um, that site could have a little more density too, because the location is really right on the major streets. So just some proposals for existing um, entitled properties, maybe we could look into offering them a little bit more density.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei, and I think that staff has a fairly a good amount of follow-ons at this time. Um, City Manager Wu, did you want to uh, speak to any of these, you know, I I know that's a fairly um, large amount of volume with regard to uh, the discussion topics and the requested follow-ups, but uh, at this point, did you want to give us a sense of expectations for what's in store for tomorrow evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Um, given that we're at the late hours and we're coming back again tomorrow, so I do want to make sure the council and staff have um, ample time or also adequate time to address. So what I noted is that we'll come back with more follow-up on the Outback Site and also the Bob um, Office Building Site. So those will be added to the new inventory, I'll be working with planning staff on that. Um, per Vice Mayor Chow's suggestion, we'll add the acreage to each of the map to clarify how big these sites are. And we'll also correct the typo that clarified the maximum height per the density. I believe it's thirty dwelling uh, unit per acre at the forty-five feet height, um, so we'll correct that. And we'll also consolidate the comments that we received so far and present that to council um, to see how much that will be directed. Um, there are a lot of wonderful comments that were provided tonight. I don't know if planning staff will have time to have those feedback and follow-up by tomorrow, but certainly they could be addressed in the draft document, or we'll have a separate study session after that. So I just want to make sure that those are what I have noted, and let me know if I've missed anything.
Okay, uh, well, without without opening the door to reiterating everything that's been repeated that you didn't hear um, City Manager Wu uh, recite, with the understanding that, you know, again, um, there's been a commitment to summarize the the comments that have been heard. And also, it probably would be helpful if you shared material to send that over to the city clerk, to be able to be uh, shared with uh, with staff, the city manager, as well as the C D D Department. Uh, because presumptively, they'll be, you know, incorporating that if available into uh, the notes that are uh, available to both the public and to us for tomorrow evening's uh, meeting. So uh, without uh, inviting, again, overly extensive reiteration of what we've already, uh, you know, discussed this evening, let me go back in order, uh, I have hands raised from Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow, and Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie is is lowering his hand right now, and Vice Mayor Chow, let's go to you before Councilmember Moore.
Um, yeah, thank you, Pamela, for summing up the requests. I think the, please also include the the current use of each site, so that we don't have to waste time asking what is this site for, what is what's at this site, what's at that site. Current stores, office, yeah, that that will help orient orient it.
So did you want to speak to that, um, City Manager Wu? Some some kind of shorthand as to what a particular, you know, location is?
Through the mayor, um, I will, I'll be working with directors um, and also the planning staff, um, to make sure, we'll do our best. Um, but nor don't guarantee that we'll provide everything.
Right, I mean, there's kind of limited real estate to a certain degree, um, and there's limited time.
Exactly, so and then I do want to know that we promised Councilmember Moore that we'll provide her the um, Excel spreadsheet, so we're working on that.
It seems Pew has everything in her head, she knows every site is. So she just need to have that down in paper, then it will be very, very helpful.
Well, we'll do the best we can.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, and let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul, so I just want to repeat and and also clarify that my complaint is with the developer, because it looks, if my, if the math, when I looked in their plan set, I'm seeing not three hundred and sixty-one very low-income units, but two hundred and sixty-seven, and my complaint is that they used the modification allowance to decrease um, the the uh, inclusionary housing at the at the very low income level and move it up to the the low income. So I want, I would like staff to double-check if I'm, what I'm seeing is correct.
No, that's that's correct, so they had they had provided additional uh, very low-income units on a voluntary basis prior to the project modification, which uh, they removed in the project modification.
Okay, thank you, thank you for saying that.
Right, okay, well, thanks very much, and uh, that does it for our council comments at this time. So we're going to go ahead and continue this to tomorrow evening, per uh, my discussion with the city attorney. At the very beginning of the meeting, we're not going to go ahead and um, continue it as an exclusively Zoom meeting. Uh, it will be a hybrid meeting, uh, this space will be available, uh, council and, you know, attendees are are free to attend in person if they wish, uh, but under our current protocols, uh, even in a meeting like this, or for that matter, our regularly scheduled meetings, uh, you could be coming into an empty uh, chamber, but of course, we don't want to notice them as such, uh, and not show up. So so tomorrow, uh, this space will be available in case anyone wants to, you know, make public comment, for instance, but uh, my expectation is that essentially we'll be uh, meeting over Zoom. Um, but Councilmember Wei, you have a question before we uh, adjourn and continue the meeting?
So do you want us all to Zoom in?
Uh, that that would be my request, and it it, I I don't know pragmatically whether whether it is really that feasible to keep community hall open uh, during the entirety of the meeting, but essentially, that's what, uh, well, actually, you know what? Maybe it would be useful to take a poll of um, you know, the council and our attendees, uh, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk, to see what preferences are. Because if your preferences are to be here, you know, maybe it's a better workspace for you, for instance, um, then we could just continue it as is, essentially, you know, in 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 the spirit of noticing the public as to what to expect tomorrow. Um, maybe we could start with our city attorney, who had probably has the longest haul to get here.
Yeah, I mean, I'll obviously defer to council's wishes, but I I'm, yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable in either location.
Okay, appreciated, uh, Madam City Manager?
Um, I could be available either way, um, you know how, where I live, so.
Alrighty, um, Councilmember Wei?
I don't mind zooming in or coming, but but I my the logistically, how do we open this with nobody's here?
Well, I think I think a facilities person, you know, could probably be maintaining it.
So zooming is fine with me.
Okay, um, yeah, I I am actually pretty, pretty, pretty neutral as well. Councilmember Willie?
I'll go either way.
Either way, uh, your microphone.
Yeah, I'd go either way. If if the mayor and city manager and city attorney are not here, then I I don't see uh, any real benefit for being in person versus Zoom.
Okay, well, Madam City Clerk, any particular preference? You, at this point, any particular person that has a preference probably has a tipping point, but is there?
My preference would be via Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, very good, um, all right, so while we have our our Zoom members, uh, let me give you the courtesy, um, Councilmember Moore?
Uh, this is fine.
This is fine, a Zoom, okay, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, this is fine.
Okay, so we'll uh, effectively have a Zoom meeting tomorrow, folks, and so um, we'll go ahead and uh, continue this meeting as noticed, uh, originally as a hybrid meeting, but uh, if you do decide to come into Community Hall, uh, I guess apologies in advance for uh, the relative loneliness of the experience. So uh, thank you very much, we will be adjourning this meeting and we'll continue it tomorrow evening uh, at five P M, that's Tuesday, uh, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, thanks very much, we'll see you tomorrow. That's Tuesday, uh, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Thanks very much. We'll see you tomorrow.